Okay, I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, June 5th, 2024. Steve or Brian, can we do a roll call, please?
Certainly. Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Mr. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Bryce?
Here.
Listening, I'm sorry, my, I don't have my glasses on. Ms. Lankowski, just wanna make sure I get everything right. Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Ms. DePachnik?
Here.
Ms. Langallis?
Here, and I'd just like to say, welcome to Diana. We look forward to working with you, Diana.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
And Mr. Schulman?
Here.
Okay.
Okay, um, we have a full house this evening. That means we, and we have two alternates with us. So I can, I'm gonna have to seat them alternately. Diana, what that means, if you're not seated in an action, it means you can't vote on it. But you can participate in the discussion. So I will seat you for the action on the fire department. The second item, I think I'll seat you for that as well. We do have to take an action there. I cannot seat you on Main Avenue, Norwalk, because you haven't watched the videos and you're not familiar with the material there. So Anna will be seated for that. And the same holds for 10 Norton Place, where we, this is now, I believe, our fourth meeting on that. And I believe you have not watched the four videos, which amount to about 16 hours. So Anna, you're, you will be seated for that as well, for those two hearings. I will seat Diana for ONG. That's only going as far as the presentation this evening. And I think that's it for the seating. So let's begin with the first item, 2024-38, special appropriation, Norwalk Fire Department, special capital appropriation in the amount of $17,100 for building repairs. We need to approve the movement of money within the fire department. This is a fairly traditional type of item that we, we deal with with some frequency. And who is representing the fire department? Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Please, go ahead.
Good evening, committee members. So what we're, we did a project, Station 5 Roof Replacement, a few years back. We came in under budget by $17,000. Within the last couple of years, we've noticed a lot of movement in our, the slab at Station 1. And for those of you who aren't familiar with it, that's the Broad River Station. That's a three-bay drive-through station. The trucks literally, the trucks go in and out. They don't back in, and there's movement both entering and exiting the building. And there's, the cracks are getting larger. And we also have some drainage issues. We've lost at least one, one drain within, on the interior of the building. Brought Bill Ireland over there from the Building Department, and he said, this absolutely needs to be addressed right now. So we, we got authorized by Bill Ireland and Alan Lowe and Purchasing to, to retain GZA for geotechnical engineering. What they're gonna do is do test boards, and we're gonna, we're gonna, to basically ascertain the the scope of work that needs to be done to fix the project, to fix the floor, whether, up to total replacement, and how we would replace it. So this money would cover those initial costs. And then at least we can get a true pricing to come back with to everybody that's for, for an appropriation to repair the floor.
Okay, sounds pretty straightforward. Any questions?
Just a comment. I'm so happy that Station 1 isn't the main firehouse. That's what I thought when I read it. A little scary to think that the floor was moving in that building already.
Yeah, no, this, this building was from 1964, and it's the original floor. So we, we couldn't even get a capacity on this, and the trucks are not smaller. So this definitely needs to be done. We don't, we don't know the void space underneath there, but we certainly don't want an issue. We don't wanna find out.
Okay, can I have a motion to authorize to the department to make this internal budget adjustment?
I'll make the motion move.
Okay, Tammy has made the motion. Is there a second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear who that was.
I'll second.
Oh, thank you, Richard. Richard seconds. Again, I think we can do this with just a show of hands. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous.
Just shut it off and open the door.
Thank you.
Thank you. That happens to be the station that services my house.
We'll fix it as soon as possible, I promise.
The second item, 2024-37 SPR, so it's a SPR CAM, Wall Street Opportunity Fund LLC, care of Jason Milligan, 21 and 23 Isaac Street, District 1, Block 29, lots 25 and 28, construction of a six-story extended stay hotel. This is just a preliminary review. And the action we'll need to take is approval of an architectural peer review. Attorney Blank, I'll turn it over.
It's the chairman, Attorney Blank. I've got a minor issue I have to resolve downstairs. I need to sign off. I'll be back shortly.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay.
Yeah, floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Adam Blank. Live here in Norwalk. I'm also in Broad River, so it's my fire station too. Attorney for the Applicant Wall Street Opportunity Fund LLC, which is an entity with the principal, Jason Milligan, who some of you may know. Tonight, I'm just gonna give you maybe a five, five to seven minute introduction to the project. Jason will talk to you briefly as well. As Chairman Schulman said, we're asking you to authorize the architectural peer review. We do have Ray Sullivan, the project architect, who's on this. He's not gonna give a presentation. If questions come up, he'll be happy to attempt to answer them. So with that quick introduction, this property, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, so the property is about one and a quarter acres. It's 21 and 23 Isaac Street. It's in the CD4. 23 is outlined here in blue, but this other little piece is, is 21 Isaac Street. It's currently essentially entirely a paved parking lot. You know, the Poco, or I think it's Wall Street Place Now, project that's proposed is right here along Isaac, Phase 1 and Phase 2 is in, in over here on Isaac Street. So this is our property. It does also front Leonard Street over here. And so it's a surface lot with about a 4,000 square foot retail that's currently there. What we're looking to do is to put in a 210-room, six-story extended stay hotel, along with four live-work units along the street on Leonard, and approximately 178 garaged parking spaces with four parking spaces at grade. Included with that parking would be, we're proposing currently to have 88 public spaces available. It would be a significant improvement from the current state of the property, and will really bring a lot of activity to the Wall Street neighborhood, and is very much in scale with your previously approved Wall Street Place, Poco projects. The I'll just show you real quick, a couple of renderings. The, this is looking down at it from Isaac, from Isaac Street here. So this would be the entrance to the hotel, which is another view of the same entrance, with creating a, like a half-circle or half-rotary kind of a drive entrance, so that cars can load and unload and easily turn around at our site, entrance to parking here. Where this is currently pavement would be a new pedestrian path and landscaped area connecting Isaacs to Leonard Street. Again, that's a pedestrian-only path with six stories with a setback, the upper floors. Looking from Leonard Street back at the project, where these little red little signs are, blade signs, those would be the four live-work units. Again, another entrance and exit to the garage on Leonard Street, with that pedestrian pathway landscaped area connecting Isaacs to Leonard. That's a gist of what the project will look like. It is proposed, as I'll call it, like a sparse hotel, not a, not a amenity-laden hotel. And in large part, you know, as you know, there's a whole lot of businesses along Wall Street that Mr. Milligan has an interest in, quite a number of retail, restaurant, personal service establishments. And the idea is to get people out of the hotel and out into the community, and, and supporting those businesses rather than, than coming into the hotel, staying there for their stay, and then checking out at the end of their stay without helping the community. The let me just look, the, in addition to that new pedestrian connection, there'll be a significant increase in pervious surfaces. There's an increase in landscaping. The, the ultimate building will be certifiable, certifiable as lead silver. The, a whole lot of drainage upgrades. The street currently just sort of dead ends here at Isaac Street. That's the current condition. We didn't create it. We're not causing an issue. And so by, if a car is coming down here, not for our project, but just coming down here, they get kind of stuck. They have to do a K-turn to get out. Our proposal, our, our customers have, won't have to deal with that, because they'll come in and out of the garage, and they have this turn. But we think as a practical matter, the, the very limited traffic that might be going to sort of nowhere on the end of Isaac Street now, will have a way to easily get out of Isaac Street. So we think that's a nice public benefit. This, so there is a traffic report that's been submitted. We don't see any traffic issue created by this or any, any site access concerns. And unlike, you know, you had a recent hotel application. That one was a special permit application. This is not. This is a site plan application. It's an as-of-right application. And, and notably, we're not fighting with the architectural review. And redevelopment has some design review guidelines that need to be reviewed to make sure that this submission conforms to. But this is not, this is not a, a village district or historic district where you actually have architectural review. Redevelopment does, but, but this is not an architectural review like your last application. Just wanna keep those things in mind for you. But we do think this is gonna be a great addition to the Wall Street neighborhood. Want you to authorize the peer review. And with that, unless there's a question for me, I'll let Mr. Milligan speak for just a couple of minutes, because we know you got a long agenda.
Attorney Blank, is that rooftop solar I'm seeing?
Yeah, so it's, it's mostly rooftop solar. There's obviously some amenity space, which is, complies with your regs. And, and it is, it will be lead silver, so it's gonna be a pretty efficient building.
Thank you.
Jason, if you are unmuted, wherever you are. We lost you. You're on mute, though.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. Jason Milligan, 48, Wall Street. I think I know most of you, but for those of you I don't know, hello. And I just wanna talk about, in general, Adam touched on most of it. I do own a fair amount of property down here, and I'm very in tune and have great relationships with my tenants. There is, you know, the, the neighborhood is on the rise. There's many retailers and new restaurants, including the hottest new restaurant, Greer Southern Table. We have a new theater operator that's fantastic. They've really cleaned it up, and they've got quite a lineup that's only expanding, and the, the talent is getting more, or higher level. And the Theatrical College, which I am surprised, I, I think I introduced the Theatrical College, the Nora Conservative Arts, to five to eight people each day that don't know about it. So it's fun that they're growing, and I don't know if you all know about them, but they started last September with 50 students. They're up to 100 students. And they come from all over the country. They're, they have someone that got onto Broadway out of their college so far. And so those needs, both the theater and the, the college are helping drive this. And I've been a broker in this town for 20 years, and I can tell you, there is a need for this type of flexible living. And it does suit the neighborhood nicely, because we look at this neighborhood as one big campus, where the amenities and the things you can do are all intertwined. And it, you know, it's got the great character of the history, but it's also a limitation. So we try and make the most of it. And you can't put everything you'd want in those old buildings and be modern. So we look at it together. And I wanted to say that we are currently in discussion with several hotel partners. And since this has been put on the agenda, there's been three or four people from across the country that have reached out, expressing interests and experience in this, and they, they also see the need. So that's, that was a nice little benefit. And then the other thing I just wanted to say, which is, you can, I just wanted to say that I'm excited about the, the four live-work units. Leonard Street is sort of the bridge between this. It's sort of, Wall Street's got everything going on. This is kind of backspace. And it's a little middle of nowhere, but we're hoping that this is one piece of a larger puzzle that we're helping create with connectivity. And in our full presentation, you'll kind of see what we have in mind, and Ray maybe could talk to that, or if you have questions. But I, that, as far as the live-work, I see that as a nice little incubator space. I talked to a lot of retail tenants or people, budding entrepreneurs, that don't have the wherewithal or the finance, finances to kind of get started. These places where you can live and work, you have a little shop, and you have a little loft where you could, you could do both things. I, I think it's fun, because the next best retailer might come out of that. So those will probably be shorter-term leases and give, give some young entrepreneurs a chance. The thing I have in mind, just you can put the, in, in the back of your minds, I would love to see a bike shop that also rents bikes, that you can hop on the nature of River Valley Trail. You can get from here to Sona, whether they're e-bikes or regular bikes or scooters. It would be great to see more people out, moving, walking, biking, and, and traveling around the neighborhood. So that's kind of all I have to say. I'm here for questions if anyone has any, and I think Ray is also with us.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Milligan? Okay, if not.
A question.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I was just down in that parking lot for the first time ever this weekend. And it's gorgeous. It's really cool, the art park and all of that. What, what, what's gonna happen to the art?
That's a great question. I love the art, and I've commissioned over 100 pieces of art in the neighborhood. And I know those artists, and I, I plan to incorporate it into the parking. So I don't know if you've been to Disney World, but you could park in like a goofy spot. It helps you remember where you're parking. I think that will be a part of it. I think some of the other pieces that maybe we like the best, or, or we might do a rotation where they're more prominently displayed on the exterior of the building, whether it's part of the lobby of the hotel, we'll have some, some in there, but it will definitely be a part of this project.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, JJ.
Tammy, did you have your hand up earlier?
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so you, you mentioned live-work units. Exactly one of those.
Well, you have it in the zoning regulations. It's defined. I'm not gonna pretend to, to, to give you the exact definition. But it's a place where you can have a retail store, and then you can also live there. So obviously, those two components would be separated. But at night, you could probably stretch out and be in the retail component, and then during the day, you could be open, or you could have some limited hours. And it's, you know, think of any type of startup business where you're on a shoestring. You combine them both, right? You start in your house, or you start in your apartment. This is just one step above that. And what it does is it makes it more inviting back there. Leonard Street's a little bit industrial. It, you know, divines on one end, you have, you have a landscaper there. There was, so it's, it's a little bit mixed there. So this is not gonna be top-of-the-line retail location, but you can get yourself out there. A lot of these entrepreneurs are on social media, so finding them is, is easier these days. It's not like they're gonna have foot traffic, but that's, is that to answer your question?
Yeah, because it almost sounds kind of like, I mean, I would think it was like an incubator or something, where, you know, you have small, small startups or, or, you know, an art incubator in that area as part of the hotel. That's what I was thinking is, is live-work, sounds something like Ray Bohemian.
Totally. If anybody, I know a jewelry manufacturer that makes their own jewelry, something, a thing like that could work. There's, you know, it really could be anything. It, it probably wouldn't be a heavy food use, because with the hood you might need, but probably some cupcake baking, or, you know, it's someone that's wanting to do something. You probably can make ice cream without a hood. We're not gonna limit it, and, and it's probably temporary space.
Not really. Okay, so kind of like targeted towards small businesses?
Definitely.
Yeah, and what it, what it really does is it takes, if, if you were to have to have an apartment and then lease space for your retail store, you'd be paying rent twice as that owner. And this lets you pay effectively what your rent would be for an apartment, but you get the bonus of having a retail space tip. And so it's for the, the sort of startup person. I think your regs might have some limitations as to exactly who can go in there, more on the artsy side than the industrial side.
So sometimes people get into trouble running businesses out of their homes when they're not allowed to. And this is a planned, regulated way to do that.
Yes.
Was, was that what you had in mind?
Sounds lovely.
Yeah, it's right in the reg, yep.
Yeah, it's, it's an allowed use. So we were, and you also have to have, in that, on the first floor, you have to have some sort of use like this. So we, we thought this is a good spot. And I can tell you, the businesses, many businesses don't work, or they, they reinvent themselves. They try something else. But a lot of them are successful. And so there, you don't really wanna have your retail in your house, probably. You kind of put up with it, I would say. And so as they get successful and they learn the ropes, they'll hopefully gravitate to one of the other retail spots that are in the neighborhood and upgrade to one of the bigger apartments as they're, as they're getting going. That's, that's the way I see it. I don't think there'll be very long-term leases there, hopefully. And I just wanted to say one other thing. There is a, a shared artist, another shared artist place, like Incubator Art, that has taken on a bunch of artists, and they've got like more applicants than they can handle. So I, I could see that being an artist loft as well. That's absolutely one of the uses that will, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna consider everyone. I, I have a feeling we're gonna have more applicants than we have space there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Go, go ahead, Darius.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Tammy. Would you like to?
It doesn't matter. Go ahead. Mine's really quick.
All right, well, then you can go.
All right, I'm sorry. Attorney Blank, did I hear you correctly that the driveway, basically, for the hotel will exit out onto Leonard Street? So you have Isaac Street and Leonard Street option in and out?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, is it, it's two-direction in both?
That's, yes, that's the plan.
That's great, because it's been so confusing down there for a while. And is the hotel the same height as the Tybac Temple?
I think it's a few feet shorter. I, I know we've looked at this, but it's pretty darn similar. The only difference, which is actually, you may, you may hear more about it another night, but that one does, does not step back at the upper floors. Under your new regs, you're required to step back for the, the two upper floors. So our building steps back, and that one does not. So it will definitely appear a lot taller.
Thank you.
Darius?
Yes, is there a plan to incorporate the current tenants into the space somehow? Or do you have a plan nearby, since we were just speaking about art? Okay.
You mean the cookie store?
Could be cookie, or I believe there's a sound studio or something.
Both, both of them, I, I, I have been in touch with, and I like them very much. They're a big part of the neighborhood. And we plan to have them stay local.
Yes, and this is.
Hopefully in one of my buildings.
Okay, that's great. And this is planned to be constructed next to the Phoenix?
Yes.
All right.
And I will, it's good you bring that up. I've been in touch with several of the people that live there, and Ray Sullivan took great care to design this to minimize the impact on them. So where we are closest to them, they have no or very limited windows, and there's a lot of space between where they, they do have their balconies and windows. So it's, it was, it was thoughtful on his part to design it that way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Adam, you wanna?
No, I'll let you guys move on. I'll have another day.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, let's move on in the agenda, move on to the.
Chairman, sorry, you, you do need to just vote out.
Oh, I am, I am, I am sorry. Thank you for reminding me, Steve. We need to take action to hire the architectural consultant. Steve, who's being suggested for this one?
We felt it was a good idea to bring in DeCarlo and Dahl for.
Oh, okay. You may remember, we've used DeCarlo and Dahl for several of the larger projects that have been undertaken recently. Is there a motion to engage DeCarlo and Dahl to do the architectural review? Tammy, was that your hand going up?
Yeah, sorry, I was muted. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, thank you. Tammy's made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Chapin has seconded. Any comment?
I, 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 I do see a hand up from one of the guests on.
Yeah, that, that's for, I think, for the next item on your agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Again, let's do this with a hand raise. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, passes unanimously. We'll now, now move on to the public hearings. Steve, if I, if, if I may, have we finally engaged going forward architectural reviewers and traffic reviewers? Has the city finished that process?
Oh, in terms of the new, new contracts? Actually, I'm on the ECD agenda tomorrow night. I anticipate authorization, so council, I think, is the following week. So yes, pretty shortly.
Okay, good. As soon as that's done, why don't you let us know? Maybe the meeting of the 20th?
Sure.
Okay, first public hearing, 2024-12 SPR, Main Norwalk LLC, District 5, Block 21, lots 174 and 97. Let me explain to the public how we conduct these public hearings. The applicant will have an opportunity to explain the project. During that explanation, the members of the commission are free to ask any questions that they would like of the applicant. When that is completed, we will open it up to the public for public comment. And at that point, Steve or Brian will explain how you can get online to make those comments. We ask that you keep your comments PG. And I need to remind you that we only allow members of the public to speak once. So make certain in your comments that you cover everything that's important to you. We don't set a time limit on how long you can speak, but I would say two things about that. Number one, it's easier for us to concentrate if your comments are brief, extended comments. It's a little bit harder for us to concentrate on. It's just a fact of life. We ask that you give us your name and your address. And once everyone Um, and once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, we will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And uh the applicant will once again have an opportunity uh to uh respond to the comments that have been made. Uh, the public comments are not, uh, although we're listening uh carefully, they are not being made to us. They're being made to the applicant who uh again, uh will have an opportunity to respond to them. Uh, once uh the uh applicant has done that, we will close the public hearing and uh go into session uh to uh try and uh arrive uh at a um uh resolution, either uh approving uh the project, approving it with modifications, or denying the project. Um, with that, uh, I'll turn it over to Attorney Sachi um for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Members of Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at Carmody Torrent Sand Deck in Hennessy, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stamford. And I represent the owner of the property, Maine Norwalk LLC, which is also the applicant. Present tonight and from whom you may hear some testimony is uh Phil DiGennaro. He is representative of the applicant. Philip Serone, the project architect. Matt Bruton of the BL Companies. He's the project civil engineer. Michael Kirker, he's a professional engineer and traffic engineer with BL Companies. And possibly even Gareth Wilson of the BL Companies. The application for site plan review was filed on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, prior to the effective date of the new zoning regulations, hence the regulations that existed at the time of filing are the regulations that control. Neighbors were notified of the submission of the application via certificate of mailing on February twenty-second, and that certificate was returned to Mr. Cluppin's attention and should be in the file. Neighbors were notified of tonight's public hearing on May twenty-third, and a packet with the green domestic return receipt cards, letters that were returned as undeliverable, and copies of letters for which the green cards had not yet been received were also delivered to Planning and Zoning today and should be in the file. To date, only one neighbor had contacted me with respect to this project, and that was a neighbor who owns property to the, across the main avenue to the west, and that is a small shopping center. He his counsel chatted with me about an old agreement that was reached between his client and my client in connection with the prior application from two thousand sixteen. I'm not sure if that individual will speak tonight, but I wanted you to be aware of that contact. As I, as was indicated, the applicant is Maine Norwalk LLC. The property address is two seventy-two, two eighty, Main Avenue. It's the large vacant piece that's being circled right now. To the west uh is the Rolling Hills condominium complex. To the north is the Miss Laura Raymond Homes residential complex. Across the street are various commercial ventures and commercially developed properties. And to the south are a variety of office structures and then some residential neighborhoods on Matthias Court and Maplewood Terrace. As mentioned earlier, the property was zone business number two at the time of submission, and the business number two regulations are what control. Um, existing conditions, property is largely vacant. Most of the structures were demolished more than fifteen years ago. There is a treatment and infiltration building and a shed on the site related to soils and groundwater remediation that continues. There is an onsite water course which flows from a pond up gradient on the Rolling Hill, Rolling Ridge condominium complex, and then that flows down onto our site. An application was submitted and approved by the Conservation Commission in February of this year. Just by way of background, the site was previously occupied from nineteen seventy-three to two thousand by Alenco, which was a high-precision electric motor company. This commission approved an application for special permit in twenty sixteen for the development of about ninety-five thousand square feet of retail space and more than three hundred and seventy parking spaces for the site. The Rolling Ridge neighbors appealed to Superior Courts. That appeal was dismissed. And then they petitioned for appeal to the appellate court, and that petition was denied by the appellate court. However, the application and approval from twenty sixteen uh has lapsed. It has expired, so it is no longer in force and effect. As mentioned, this proposal is a site plan review application filed prior to the effective date of the regulations and map that you uh adopted in December of twenty twenty-three and became effective in February twenty twenty-four. Consideration or discussion of how the site would have been developed under the new regulations therefore is not relevant to this discussion. When you consider this application and the testimony that you hear tonight and comments of neighbors and others, remember that you act in an administrative capacity when you're reviewing a site plan application, and this is well-settled law in Connecticut. As such, the question before you is to determine if the application conforms to the zoning regulations as written, not prospective regulations that were not yet effective. Further, the uh Connecticut Court, specifically in a case called Kozinski versus Lawler, one seventy-seven Connecticut, four twenty and nineteen seventy-nine case, held that a commission cannot turn down an application because it doesn't like it or because it's deemed a poor use of the site. So as you listen to the testimony, examine the exhibits and hear from neighbors, please keep in mind limitations of your role when acting on this site plan application. And base your decisions on the standards that existed at the time of submission. And those specific standards are parking, stable traffic flow, landscaping, illumination, utilities, and impact on the safe and orderly development of adjacent properties and the existence of any zoning violations. So what is the proposal? As we mentioned to you when we appeared briefly in March, we propose to redevelop the site with three two-story structures. Matt, could you possibly call it site plan? There we go. One is a nineteen thousand square foot retail store with approximately, um, approximately nineteen thousand square feet with ten apartments above, two of which would be identified indeed restricted as affordable. A twenty-two-hundred square foot restaurant on the left, Building A, and then an approximate twenty-two-hundred square foot coffee shop of sorts uh tucked in and toward the eastern portion of the property. We propose approximately a hundred and ninety-five parking spaces, which is more than what is required under the regulations, along with a bay of electric vehicle charging stations to not only satisfy the ten percent required under state statute, but to provide some more for others who find it difficult to find locations to uh charge their electric vehicles. There's a new stormwater sewer and lighting system proposed. More than forty trees, hundred and eighty shrubs, fifty grasses and perennials are proposed to be planted, all native species, all non-invasive. We are proposing a one entrance exit at the site, generally in the middle of the site. And based upon our analysis of the traffic generated, it has been determined that uh no traffic signal is appropriate or warranted for this development. We suggest various sustainable features, including solar panels on the roof of the largest building, LED lighting, energy management systems, HVAC water-reducing plumbing fixtures, low VOC adhesives, coatings, and sealants. Most of the CAC sign-offs have been, and the CAC stands for Code Enforcement Administration Committee for those who are not aware. Most have been secured. That includes fire department, health department, First District Water Department. I had expected to receive Public Works and WPCA today, but those have not come in yet. However, all questions and comments raised by that, those agencies have been addressed by the BL Companies. We have also uh received comments from your Transportation, Mobility, and Parking Department. We'll call that TMP, as well as the city's peer review consultant, AKRF, and Mr. Bruton will go, and Mr. Kirker will go into more detail about the traffic analysis and responses to those comments and questions in just a little bit. So at this point, I'd like to hand it over to Matt Bruton, professional engineer who designed the site plan, the stormwater management system. And then he will be followed by Phil Serone, and of course, not last but certainly not least, Mr. Kirker, to present the traffic findings. We'd like to reserve time for rebuttal if necessary at the end and for final comments uh at the conclusion of the public commentary. So, Mr. Bruton, would you mind taking over the reins?
Absolutely. Thanks, Liz. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just for the record, my name is Matthew Bruton. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, employed by BL Companies with an address at three fifty-five Research Parkway, Meriden, Connecticut. Uh, Liz obviously did a great job with the overall summary. I'll just move backward slightly to give a little bit more detail and context to the engineering aspects of the project. Uh, but I'll try to keep it uh brief, but happy to answer questions as they come up or at the end. Um, so just moving you back here to the existing conditions plan, just for orientation, obviously, Main Ave, DOT Road is to the bottom of the page. As Liz mentioned, it's, it's pretty much a vacant site. Uh, just to add a little more context to that, topography, for those of you that are familiar with the area, are recently driven by. Uh, elevation about seventy-five exists in the road along the frontage. And basically the site climbs towards the rear and we're getting upwards of elevation one twenty-one, twenty-five. So it's quite steep topography slope here. Uh, there is an existing rudimentary um stormwater management system that exists on the property today. Uh, as mentioned, it's really meant to just convey um the water body and, and water course from the a- adjacent rear of butter um through the site and into the DOT drainage system on Main Ave. Um, and then obviously there's uh a series of, of curb cuts and, and sidewalks along the frontage of the property. Um, as was mentioned, obviously, from the proposed conditions, looking to consolidate that into one curb cut uh in the center of the site here that you can see. Uh, this would obviously need DOT approval uh as an encroachment permit uh that we pursue after we're hopefully successful on the local level. Uh, we do obviously show the three proposed buildings with associated parking to the you know, side and rear. Uh, this land obviously conforms regulations. We're not asking for any variances or waivers. Um, this also includes items such as handicap parking spaces, loading areas um to accommodate um, to accommodate the visitors and employees. And as Liz mentioned as well, we do show um in excess uh of the regulations, uh vehicle charging um site uh of parking spaces to the side and rear of the development as well. Um, we do have also showed as part of the uh review with uh the peer reviewers and town staff, obviously, this has site has been accommodate the fire, garbage, and truck turns um for safety, public safety, and access uh around the site internally. Um, moving over to um the uh more technical aspects of the, the stormwater management, obviously, as part of this redevelopment, there is an increase in impervious area. Uh, the goal of this obviously is to provide a stormwater management system that um complies with two thousand four Connecticut Stormwater Manual, two thousand two Erosion and Sedimentation Guidelines. Uh, the goals of those documents is to match drainage patterns, mitigate peak flows, and to provide eighty percent TSS removal. By TSS removal, I mean total suspended solids, which is the normal grit, grime trash that, that is, is present unfortunately in, in modern-day parking lots and, and commercial lots to be able to treat uh and obviously clean the water to, so the quality of it that discharges off the property um is, is improved. So how we're handling it on this site is obviously a combination of items, which we call our treatment train. Uh, it's a combination of catch basins with deep sumps and hoods, um hydrodynamic separators, underground detention areas that do um connect eventually uh in a similar spot as it does today on Main Ave into the DOT drainage system in Main Ave. Um, this system has been analyzed for two, ten, twenty-five, and hundred-year events, obviously to accommodate the uh New England weather that we're all used to seeing um due to seasons. Um, just as, as a point of clarification, uh, there is no infiltration associated with this because of the prior environmental contamination. So that is not a, a part of the aspect of the uh, the plan you see in front of you today. Um, as mentioned, we do have obviously the uh necessary utilities along the frontage on Main Ave to support the three buildings. That includes sewer, water, gas, electric, and telephone. Um, we're also maintaining this uh environmental treatment system, as Liz mentioned, um for foreseeable future. So all those utilities are available. Again, as Liz mentioned, we are providing a, a pretty robust landscaping plan that complies with regulations, but also aesthetically pleasing to visitors, employees. Um, so it's a combination of uh tree, shrubs, and grasses. Um, and obviously will be a, a huge um, you know, increase in landscaping and, and beautification to the site that doesn't exist today. Um, and more importantly, there is an existing tree line to the rear of the slope, as I mentioned, as we climb to the back, that will be maintained along the rear residential of butter to the rear there. Um, so that's kind of a quick, high-level overview of the site plans. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, questions they have, or, or wait to the end after you hear from the project architects and traffic engineer. Um, so.
Uh, I saw, I, I saw in your comment that um uh you indicated you couldn't put uh trees in uh because of uh the utilities. Um, many places um use uh box trees or boxes and uh trees in containers. Uh, is there a reason you can't do that?
Uh, great question, Mr. Chairman. So I'll just, I'll uh zoom in here because we're actually already on the landscaping plan. Uh, so the um, the area that I believe you're referring to is the uh frontage here along the uh, the, the um retail building. I've highlighted roughly here. I know it's kind of hard to see with the hatch, but the gas line, um it's not even just a lateral to the building, but a main. There are other utilities as well that, that cause interference, but the the main uh gas main is really kind of dead middle of the frontage between the facade of the building and, and the proposed replacement of that frontage sidewalk. Um, so our landscape architects uh didn't think it was a, a prudent choice to, to put, you know, street trees in this area. We obviously do show, you know, uh some shrubs along the, the, the frontage of the entrance and obviously grassing this area, but uh they didn't really want to interfere uh with uh the utilities as uh obviously that the roof systems can be quite complicated. Uh, similar to obviously putting in a drainage structure like a tree box, as you said, does create a, take up quite a bit of room. Um, so we kind of shied away from that inclusion just because it's, it's a very tight area.
But that doesn't honestly answer my question. If, if you didn't have the utilities under there, you would uh be putting in uh street trees. Um, certainly, trees in containers uh are not going to take up any more space than street trees would.
I think they take up the same amount of area.
Then what's the justification for not doing it?
Uh, we, we don't think the trees have, have a, have a high success of survival rate because the, the gas line is is really kind of in this fifteen-foot area between the facade and the, and the uh frontage sidewalk right in the middle. So we'd be putting uh a tree either, you know, three and a half feet off the edge of the building or, and three and a half feet off the gas line. So it's a very, very tight area um for it to be successfully grown, whether it's in a tree box or not. If it's something you're, you're adamant, uh, we could, we could explore it a little bit further, but um, at, at, at first glance, when the request came in, we didn't think it, they, they'd basically be able to survive um in this area, given the slope, given the proximity to utilities. Um, that's why we shied away from the inclusion of them along, along this, along this area. Obviously, we provided it in other locations along the frontage um as appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question.
Go ahead, JJ.
Yes. Okay, so I actually drive past this site every day on my way to work. And along the way, the, the sidewalk is very broken and uneven, and were there plans to replace the sidewalk?
Uh, yes, Commissioner. I think the existing sidewalk is approximately four feet in width. I believe your new standard is five feet. Uh, we are proposing to uh re- replace the sidewalk along the frontage of the property.
Thank you. And then um at the beginning of your presentation, um your colleague mentioned that there was a traffic study and there was no need for a traffic signal?
Correct.
The amount of traffic that comes down that street, particularly during rush hour, on the way from the Super Seven connector to the Merritt Parkway on ramp is a lot. And if you're having this mixed-use space of both resident and commercial, I can imagine the amount of cars that want to make that left turn you know, into your, your space or even you know, pedestrians who are getting off the bus because that is actually along the route of the city bus. And I'm just wondering, is, is that conclusive? That there will be, there won't be any kind of um traffic um calming system in um, in front of your new development?
Sure, I understand your, your uh question, Commissioner. I'm going to defer to my colleague, Michael Kirker, who is our, our, our traffic engineer. I know he hasn't presented yet. I don't know if you want him to present first or answer your question. Um, he's the best professional to, to answer that question for you.
Wh- wh- why don't we, JJ, why don't we wait until uh he gives his presentation? Uh, I know I also have questions about uh, uh, traffic.
Yes.
And I'd like, I'd like to address them to him. And uh, by the way, when, when the presentation is. And uh by the way, when when the presentation is complete, uh I'm going to ask uh our own uh traffic uh consultant. Uh to add her comments to the discussion as well.
Agreed.
I had two other uh site plan questions, um so uh. We were talking a moment ago about the um sidewalks, glad glad to hear about the the five foot uh five foot wide sidewalks. We were also talking a bit about um the street trees in front, and I I see that that's quite a steep bank in front of the building C there. Um I saw in one of the responses a a note about how it was too steep of a grade to put in an ADA compliant sidewalk to bring pedestrians into the site. Uh is that the case also for the the slope near building A that could bring pedestrians in?
Uh that's correct, Commissioner, I'm gonna bring it over here, uh obviously, you know, as I kind of mentioned about the existing conditions, you can see obviously, you know, we're at. Elevation seventy-five here, we're creeping into the the, you know, high hundreds as we get to the rear. Um the challenge of the site, obviously, not only is the uh ability to develop it with with the steep grades that exist in the stormwater from the rear that needs to be. Kind of conveyed through the site, uh but also the fact that there's this pretty robust um. Uh environmental, you know, groundwater monitoring system uh that encapsulates encapsulates the site. Um that needs to to kind of maintain uh be maintained on site for the foreseeable future. So there's a lot of things that are are driving the grades a- and one of those, you know, those are a couple factors I just mentioned are doing that, so you can see. As well, look long as far to building C here with these contours, um the the restaurant building A is also elevated as well to to maintain coverage over this um. Contamination environmental system, so we are ramping up quite high to, you know, maintain the system, but also make sure that we have safe site grades. Along here as well, so you know, we're going anywhere from elevation seventy-six up to eighty-three, so it's really not conducive to um an ADA. You know, accessible route, um and then this spot over here also that we are introducing a a variety of retaining walls across the site to create these pads that are safe for. For visitors, so uh it is it is unfortunately not a not a very great site in in terms of that aspect of it.
Appreciate that, yeah, I I think when I had seen this initially, I thought there might be an opportunity following the uh site driveway, like between building A and the site driveway, like following that curve of the site driveway up. Uh just since that seemed to be the the least steep of the grade, but I'm uh not familiar with what grades required for ADA, and so I. I thought that might be an opportunity for kind of a sweeping sidewalk, if you will, along the entrance there, so that way folks are able to walk in. I presume folks who want to walk in are going to, so it's whether they're gonna walk over your grass uh or uh you know, have a sidewalk to do so, um but.
Right. Yeah, no, great question, and obviously we did look at um whether the the sidewalk could could do as you as you explained, the driveway is unfortunately steeper than ADA require our requirements allow. Uh we have obviously added um interconnectivity in terms of sidewalks and crosswalks between the buildings. Uh to really promote the 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 walkability of it, um where we could, that that made sense for for safe pedestrian access between between uses.
Sure, and then the other thing I wanted to um call out is I I didn't see it in the plans, but I I may have missed it. Um you know, during the construction phase of this site, um is there a plan to leave the existing sidewalk uh in place basically until it's time to do the sidewalk, so that way. Folks are still able to traverse the site um during construction and don't have to uh step into traffic or um. Walk quite a ways to go all the way around the site just because the sidewalks closed up ahead?
Yeah, that's that's a great question, um obviously I don't think we have that addressed specifically in terms of we showing up, obviously being demoed and replaced. That's usually something that we lead up to the contractor in term in terms of the means and methods of when that stage, but. To your point, I think the commitment can be made tonight that obviously we maintain that as long as possible to avoid. Uh diverting um pedestrians that use this until a time is absolutely necessary to. Replace it and obviously you want to replace it as quickly as po- as possible to to keep that connectivity for for the residents in the area.
I appreciate that, yeah, we we hear a lot of frustration on um, I think it's West Ave, where there's a sidewalk that has been closed for an extended period of time and pedestrians have been stepping into the road, and that is that is certainly a a safety issue, so.
Very dangerous, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Um Lou, if I may?
Please, Tammy.
Thank you, um, Mr. Bruton, this might be a question for you or perhaps the uh traffic engineer, but on your um. Schematic, it looks to me like you have a driveway in on the right side and then. Two exit paths on the left side, is that, is that correct? With a little island or something in the middle?
Correct, I'll just highlight for you, Commissioner, just to show, yeah, so yeah, this would be the one way in. And then these would be the two lanes going out, one dedicated to go this way, one dedicated to go that way, and there is. This lands, there is a landscaped island here that I've kind of circled in the middle.
Okay, and that's fairly standard operating procedure to have those two exits, so somebody doesn't have to wait. Behind somebody that wants to go to the right.
Yeah, I mean, as you can imagine, and that. Sure, yeah, as you can imagine, I can add that the traffic engineer in the presentation add more context, but. Taking a right is much easier, obviously, because you don't have to cross as many lanes of traffic, left is a more difficult turn, so um I wouldn't, you know, it's it's a common. Procedure to kind of have two exit lanes in some locations, give the demand to uh, you know, facilitate the ease of exiting the property.
Yep, thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions of Mr. Bruton at this point? Certainly happy to answer them.
I'm not going anywhere, something else pops up.
I'm hearing none then, if it's uh your your pleasure, Mr. Serone, can you come on and explain the architecture floor plans and other. Uh areas within your area expects of expertise? You may be muted still.
Sorry about that, um so for the record, my name is Philip Serone, I'm an architect here in Fairfield, Connecticut, my office is at four twenty-one Meadow Street. In Fairfield and um we're the architects for this project. So I'm gonna just, I'm gonna kind of walk you through the the three different buildings, the plans and the elevations of them. And then um we could show you the renderings that we've done, just to give you a kind of a little bit better feel of what we're seeing for the project. So with that said, um we'll start with the first building, which is the building on the um. As you're facing the site from from the Main Avenue, it's the building on the left, which is about twenty-two hundred square feet on the first floor. Um as you can see, it's and the understand before we go through this too much that these are all schematic plans, we don't have tenants for these buildings yet, so they're kind of generic. Um we're designing them to in such a manner currently, so that as we get tenants, you know, we have, we will have to have the ability to kind of tweak some things, so. What we have exactly is, you know, kitchens and backs of houses and all of that. The these might move around a little bit, but the overall square footages aren't going to really change, so what we have here is we have a patron area in the front of the building. This being Main Avenue over here, and then this gives us the access on three sides, and. I know there was a conversation about accessibility, all of our buildings will meet all the ADA codes, all the accessibility codes, all the building codes. They will be all fully accessible from the parking lot side, even if it's a little bit of a challenge to walk there off of Main Avenue, they will be completely fully accessible. So as I said, this building here is designed as potentially a small little restaurant space, patron area, some back of house. And then on the second floor, we have storage, which is this storage space, understand, is only for the restaurant space on the first floor. We know the regulation as it was in place when we submitted this requires us to have a two-story building. So we took advantage of that by putting some storage space upstairs, which is accessed with the staircase to the second floor. Uh all of our buildings do have solar on the roof, um we will also have mechanical spaces on the roof, which will all of course be screened with with um screening around them. Um depending on the height of the units, the screening will of course conceal all of the units, and then they all do have access from the inside of the building with a roof hatch. So that as people need to get up there and do service on the units, they can do that easily, so um. Let's see. On the exterior of the building, again, we've tried to keep the buildings relatively simple, um there's a variety of different materials, combinations of brick. Um storefront glass, again, where we think the restaurant dining space is going to be, we have a lot of glass in those areas. We've put placeholders in for the time being for signage, um we obviously don't have tenants, as I said, so we don't have names for them, so but we did put placeholders. As you can see here, we do have screening on the roof for our HVAC units that were beyond the roof. And there's actually a small parapet on these, so that'll also conceal any smaller things, if there's hoods or exhausts, things like that. Or kitchen equipment, then that'll be concealed behind the parapets also. Um we do have, you know, just to add a little bit of interest, we do have some overhangs that conceal over the doors and the entrance into the building, so. The second building, which is the coffee shop that's in the back of um that restaurant space, so more towards. More towards the east side of the property, kind of the northeast, um again, on the first floor. With this is, this building does have a drive-through in it, so the drive-through lane would be here and um. We have the the patron dining area here, the 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 service area um and the takeout area here, and then back of house with the staircase over here. And then on the second floor, we have the storage and the mechanical space with a staircase upstairs, again, this storage space is only for the. Restaurant or the takeout or the coffee shop that's on the first floor, it's not intended to be used as um any other rental space or for other people to use. And then on the roof, again, we do have solar panels on the roof, and then we do have some mechanical space on the roof with the HVAC units. The exterior of this building again is somewhat similar to that one, this one, we do have an area, as you saw on the site plan, where we have some outdoor dining space. And so we've carried this element across to conceal to create some um covering over that space, again, storefront windows. Some sort of wood panel siding and then brick, um and then the signage and then the the screening for the HVAC units on the roof. Yeah, I'm gonna show you some renderings of this, which will help you understand it a little bit better. When you get to the last building. Building C, which is the retail building, more towards the southern side of the site, the kind of southwest corner of the site. This building is a combination of both retail and residential, so the the retail entrance would be. Away from Main Avenue, kind of where most of the parking is, we have a little bit of vestibule there, again, without knowing the exact tenant, we just blocked out what we see as the retail space. Stockroom, storage space in the back, we blow, we created some break rooms, office space, utility rooms, receiving area, this building. Which is about nineteen thousand square feet, does have its own lot, a loading dock over here, and then the staircases are egress from the second floor. There's a separate entrance over here for the residential section, the little mailroom and the elevator, so. The people that are going upstairs have their complete separate entrance and identity separate than the retail space itself.
Before we move on to the retail, I mean, the residential, what sort of retail are you envisioning here?
We don't have a retailer currently, so um we've just kind of done it as a generic space, so it could be.
Give me a sense of what you guys are looking for here, because when I look at this, I I see like a grocery store, I see a Trader Joe's. Is that the sort of tenant that you're targeting?
So so I I'm Phil DiGennaro, who's representing the owners on, I'm gonna kind of let him answer that question because. Um he has more familiarity with what kind of tenants that they're talking to.
Hi, for the record, yep, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep, for the record, Phil DiGennaro. Albert Feinstein Associates, um you know, the reality is, we're looking for tenants that will come. And pay rent and and work for us economically and them economically and something that fits in. I don't think a Trader Joe's would go here. Um you know, it could be. Some type of restaurant or a group of restaurants, it could be a dental office, it could be an eye place, or it could be a um.
Who you guys are talking to, I just have trouble believing that you haven't started talking to uh potential tenants. And so I'm curious of what the what the archetype of those tenants are.
We have been talking to tenants, we have not been successful in obtaining any of it, it's just that simple, um. The retail landscape these days is limited and those that are organically growing with new ground up stores. Uh aside from quick serve restaurants and convenience and gas stations, it's not like it used to be, it clearly is a slowdown. Um in addition to that, economics have changed drastically, so trying to find the right combination of a tenant that works. On the site that we feel good about for the community and that will, you know, thrive there, it's it's been a challenge candidly, but we've spoken to. All kinds of tenants, we were out at the ICSC this year in Vegas presenting it to tenants and. We've got some interest in coffee shops, we've got some interest from some sit-down restaurants, nothing yet for the big twenty thousand foot block.
Well, given.
When you say coffee shop, do you mean Starbucks or the other location, since it has a drive-through?
Well, well, Starbucks is a coffee shop, there there are one, but there are several others that candidly we like just as much as Starbucks.
But for the smaller location, not the twenty thousand.
Oh yeah, for the for the rear location, to be clear.
And it could be a boutique kind of coffee shop, we've also discussed not necessarily a chain coffee shop.
Exactly right.
Uh I'd like to, I'd like to go back to to Nick's uh question. Uh given that uh you didn't use um either uh a a fast food or a grocery store. Uh to um uh develop um your your um uh traffic numbers. For the larger space, are you willing to stipulate, if we approve this, that you will not have a grocery store or. Uh a fast food restaurant in that space?
No, o- only because we don't know what the future holds, and if I'm correct in understanding your regs and the way your zoning works. You guys have what I'll call a lookback, a traffic, if after a tenant goes in and is operating. I think there's some kind of six-month time period that you get to make sure things are functioning safely, which we clearly want as well, we want a very safe operation. And I don't know the particulars of it, maybe Liz or one of the zoning staff could discuss it, but I think you have that protection in your regs already. So to 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 call it out, I I wouldn't want to put a restriction on there, if a grocery store did come along. We would, we would come to you guys and tell you that we're talking to them and figure out what works for the site and for the city.
Well, then the the question is, why didn't you use uh grocery store numbers for your traffic study? Uh is that because the numbers would have been substantially higher and might have shown the need for a traffic signal?
We spoke to grocery stores and we could not get enough interest and the economics to work. So we didn't think that a grocery store was a real possibility, we went down the road with several brands that you would recommend, but. We couldn't make the numbers work both for them and for us, so we didn't want to, you know. Use a a trip generation that is not accurate and maybe overstated. So we went this route.
Lou, I'm right there with you, like this is my biggest concern.
I understand, that's why I asked my question.
This is my biggest concern here is, it looks like the Trader Joe's parking lot in Westport, and for you to say like. That this isn't gonna cause mayhem if one of those entities go in here, like we'd be lying to ourselves. It's the equivalent to putting the Dunkin' on the right side in East Norwalk or. Any of the other situations we have, and we'll hear from the traffic people and they'll tell us what they'll tell us, but like that's that's my biggest. Concern with this project is like, it's incomplete or unclear on some of the details such that I feel very uncomfortable with how it.
But Commissioner, I I completely understand your concern, I I really do. I'm just wondering, and maybe Liz, you could help me on this, I was under the impression that. You guys have what I keep calling a lookback, I don't know what you called in your regulations, that goes out six months, and you. Can look at a property, analyze its traffic, if there's a safety concern, if it's more than anyone expected, you could make. I don't know whether it's recommendations or you could, you know, impose uh certain things. That would correct the situation, which we clearly would want as well, I can tell you this, if we ended up getting a grocery store here, let's just say that. that would correct the situation, which we clearly would want as well. I can tell you this, if we ended up getting a grocery store here, let's just say that happened. The grocery store would want a traffic light because, and we would want one too, because that's the way it would safely operate. But we don't have one today, so to put a traffic light on the on the road, you know, it it's just not practical. It's also not up to us. It's, and I'll let the traffic, I speak to it, but it's, you have to meet certain warrants in order to be considered by the DOT OSTA. And again, not having a fast food restaurant and not having a grocery store today, we don't meet, we just don't meet the warrants. But but if we did, I would completely agree with you. If we had a grocery store and a fast food place, we would meet the warrants and in all likelihood, there would be a traffic light there.
But even with a boutique coffee shop that you mentioned earlier, you still would need a safety traffic flow.
And and that is, as part of the plan, that has been shown. Let me just take a step back. First of all, in the zoning regulations, there's no separate classification for grocery store or as a as it relates to retail, it's straight retail. So that's what's presented. Second of all, the if this is a whatever retail this is, it's nineteen thousand square feet. It's not the eighty five thousand that was presented and approved by this commission six years ago, which required a traffic signal, and that was appropriate. In addition, there is a requirement with the Connecticut Department of Transportation that we meet with them and secure from them a roadway encroachment permit to create that entrance on into the site. So during that process, if the DOT determines that additional studies are necessary, additional information is necessary, uh that warrant analysis will be reviewed again by DOT by DOT. There could be a determination by DOT that in further in retrospect, in further review of this proposal, a traffic signal is warranted. But again, as as Phil indicated and as Mr. Kirker will tell you, and that is not something that you as a commission or TMP as an agency can impose upon us, that's strictly within the confines of DOT's authority. But keep in mind, this is only nineteen thousand square feet, it's not a forty thousand square foot building, it's not eighty five thousand square feet like the last time. Um, and and as far as Commissioner Jordan Byron, your question, there is not only ample queuing space around the area of the building that's proposed for a coffee shop, there's also an exit road or an exit lane, so that there's more flexibility and there's greater stacking at this proposed coffee shop than there are at any of the other coffee shops with drive ins, drive throughs uh in Norwalk, and Mr. Kirker will get into that. Hope that's somewhat helpful, but as Mr. DiGennaro indicated, you've traditionally and consistently made conditions of approval such that if after six months after opening, we, an applicant must come back to you with an updated traffic study to confirm the traffic analysis that it did, the levels of service and um the other components of its traffic study, and if there are issues or if there are, we were incorrect, then we have issues that we have to deal with, such as whatever mitigation would be necessary to make this a safe and properly functioning site. Maybe it might be helpful at this point for Mr. Kirker to explain the traffic study and the warrant system, and that may answer some questions. But um we're certainly hope helping, we're certainly happy to answer whatever questions you have throughout the process.
Yeah, we seem, uh however, at the moment, to have a question from Ms. Tabachnik.
Sure.
Yes, um, might be more for staff. The six month follow up traffic studies, do those get posted to the project application page? I haven't seen them get emailed out. Um, I I've only been on a mission for like a year. How how do we see those or how does the public see those when they happen?
Um, I can only think of a couple that have been required on a couple of different applications, and I think we've just placed them in the file because there was no. One of them, I think, was prior to us even posting applications on the page and other ones. Um, we just placed in the file because there was no follow up beyond just you had to provide this six month traffic study.
When you say place them in, um, the one was before things were online, but the ones that were after, when you say placed in the file, does that not post it online?
I can't think of one that's been submitted since we've been posting things online that has been one of an issue, so I I haven't seen one.
Could you guys post them regardless of the findings, so that there's sort of a complete picture for everybody of the follow up and what happened?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, uh, but back to you, Attorney Sajji.
Thank you, Mr. Schulman. Uh, at this point, if Michael Kirker could come online and he can uh go through with you the process for the traffic report, warrant analysis, DOT's involvement, and answer any other questions that you might have.
Sure. Uh, my name is Mike Kirker from BL Companies. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. Just going to go ahead and share my screen. I just have a quick presentation. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
All right. So the purpose of the traffic impact study is to deter is to determine the impact, if any, on the land development um of the adjacent roadway network. I recommend mitigation if needed while analyzing the build. The the build conditions, no build conditions and existing conditions, and we had looked at the AM uh commuter peak period, so seven AM to nine AM. The PM commuter peak period is four to six PM, and then Saturday midday, the eleven AM to one PM peak period. So these are the, you can see my cursor as well, right?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so these are the eight signalized intersections that we had looked at that were part of our study. Essentially, it was the entire corridor stretching from the creeping hemlock intersection all the way back to the intersection with um Route one twenty three with the site in between. So these are the eight signalized intersections as well as a couple of um on and off ramps uh with Route fifteen. So as I mentioned, the tra- um, we had those eight signalized intersections, so we had traffic counts that were collected in June of twenty twenty three for the AM and PM during the weekday as well as Saturday during the midday. Uh, we had those, these counts approved by Connecticut DOT Policy and Planning Group, and we also had the field inventory as well to supplement. So when, once we have the existing counts, we then project out those volumes from existing conditions to no build. And the no build represents the conditions without the project. So it includes that projection to the builder as well as including the traffic from any other developments. I know there was some back and forth about additional developments to include. We included the North Seven Master Plan after talking with um one of uh another consultant who had previously worked on this. That was um, that that was the way that we move forward. We include the North Seven Master Plan as background trips. So as was previously mentioned with the site plan review, there's the vehicular access at that one driveway and access and egress with Main Ave. And as I mentioned, for your build conditions and no build, we project the twenty twenty three counts out to the builder for twenty twenty five. And those uh generated trips were are distributed to the roadway network to produce our build analysis. The uh trip generation is from ITE's, the Institute of Tr- of Transportation Engineers, uh Trip Generation Manual, the eleventh edition. And we look at the trip distribution patterns along the roadway network and essentially kind of tying in the previous slides, you're taking the no build and you're adding the new site traffic to develop the builder. This is a summary of the land uses based on square footage and or units depending on the land use uh for each of these three peak hours. So they're broken out by peak hour, entering the site and exiting the site by land use. And then there is a Connecticut DOT has a twenty percent pass by, so the pass by being if this were not your intended, if one of these sites or if this site was not your intended destination, you may visit the site and then continue to your destination on your way to the destination. Um, so there is a twenty percent allowable pass by for the hot, for the restaurant as well as for the strip retail and a fifty percent pass by allowed for the coffee shop. So we have the net new trips as to what are new trips, new vehicles that are going to be uh drawn to the roadway network as a result of this site. Just as a quick comparison at in terms of daily trips, we were just looking at previously peak hour. These are daily trips to kind of give a comparison as to where our daily trips kind of fit in the grand scheme of things for other similar sites that we've worked on. There's a comparison of a standalone gas station, a standalone McDonald's, obviously a Costco and a ShopRite as well, just to kind of give a comparison as to what the daily trips are looking like. In terms of the traffic operations, this uses uh Synchro version eleven, and it looks at the level of service. And the level of service is determined by delay. You could see the level of service A through F on the the uh color coded A through F, and it has a range of uh average control delay, depending on if the intersection is signalized or unsignalized. So you could see the thresholds are a little bit different between the two, but just generally, it's it, you're anything less than ten is uh level service A, and anything greater than eighty seconds per vehicle of signal line of delay for a signalized intersection would be a level service F, uh and anything over fifty for an unsignalized would be a level service F. So you can kind of see from this slide, the eight existing intersections as well as the site drive. Just to, just to have no, I guess, you have level, working from left to right, you can obviously read this yourselves, but uh just to kind of, you have let the level service B in no build, and that remains the same in build. Uh, level service B and A, no build, and that remains the same in build. Um, same thing uh as that first intersection, level service B for a few of these. Uh, this one has a level service A. I will get back to the site driveway in a second. Um, level service C at the Linden Ave or Linden Street intersection. Level service B continuing to the uh stop and shop intersection, and then the level service F is in no build uh for the AM peak period and C for Saturday and PM, and it remains the same uh for build. I know this is part of, this intersection is part of the Route seven and fifteen project, uh DOT project that will be completed within the next few years as well, so that that is uh that those timings we had noted um for potential adjustment as well, uh irrespective of this project. And going back to the site driveway, I will note that the the operations on Main Ave have um level service B for AM, PM and Saturday as well as a right turn lane, that left turn lane has a level of service of F as a result of the delay exceeding those eighty seconds. Um, hence the reason for the split of the two lanes from the left and the right turn. And I'll kind of get into more detail. I just wanted to, I had a screenshot of the signal warrant analysis and how this is, how this is completed. So this looks at your left turns and it, you're taking your one direction of Main Ave, so your northbound direction, your southbound direction, sums up your two directions of Main Ave, and then it distributes your total number of daily trips by hour to help give a breakdown by hour if it would meet the signal warrant analysis. There are two conditions that are part of the signal warrant analysis per the MUTCD, uh which is a manual of uniform traffic control devices. Con- condition A is more specific to minimum vehi- vehicular volume, where your your more, your concern is a large volume of intersecting traffic, so you're a a higher volume. In our case, would be the volume exiting the site. Uh, condition B is when condition A is not satisfied. Um, so this is the, this is when there's traffic on the minor streets that experiences excessive delay as a result of traffic on Main Ave. So you're going to see more, in this case, um, condition B would be more of my concern because of the main app, but as you could see, it's not actually wa- it's not warranted. Um, in combination, it's warranted under condition B in those four hours, which are those peak hours that we included the seven AM and seven to eight and the eight to nine, as well as the four to five and five to six. And these numbers are directly pulled from, um, these are, these are uh more conservative hourly numbers that were pulled from ITE's trip generation.
When you say that, when you say that, what is that using the generic retail IT numbers versus a grocery store IT numbers?
Correct. It is using these same land use codes on the slide.
Right, and it it, I'm not perfect with this stuff, but just correct me, A, if you were to swap the nineteen thousand square foot unit to be a grocery store versus general retail, the IT numbers would be higher?
Correct. Yep, that is correct.
Significantly?
Um, in terms of the in terms of the actual peak hour itself, I can, I can, if you, I I guess I don't know significantly or not. I could ru- if you, if you want, I I guess if, once we get to other questions, I could run those numbers offline and I could tell you exactly what that difference is between grocery and retail, if you'd like that. I just don't know. I I know it is higher, I just don't know the significance of it being higher.
Okay.
It's kind of going back to here. Like I said, these numbers take the total net new trips down here, and it ends up projecting them out by hour based on percentages provided by IT. And these were actually using, like I said, using more conservative number, which is the actual peak hour traffic that we had included in our traffic study. Our recommendations were to obviously have the stop, stock control with the stop R and to improve the timings at that intersection of creeping hemlock drive. Um, as it operates, as I mentioned, the poor, uh as I mentioned, that operates uh with the level service F and existing no build and build irrespective of this project. I know there are questions, so I will end that there. I will unshare my screen.
Further questions about traffic? Uh, Liz, are you going to have any more beyond this?
Uh, after Mr. Kirker, no, if there is, I I suspect that you would like um AKRF to come on.
Yeah, uh, I think uh this would be the time to invite uh Marissa Torolla.
Um, and they had a conversation, uh Mr. Kirker and Marissa had a conversation, I believe, yesterday. Um, and we're certainly.
This morning, actually, yeah.
This morning, excuse me, we're certainly open to uh creative suggestions, reasonable conditions, keeping in mind that, again, this is a site plan application and on a state road. Perhaps um before Mr. Kirker leaves, could you explain to this, the commission, what the road and roadway encroachment permit process is? And how, if at all, the warrant analysis may or may not come into play. I just didn't want to misspeak when I added comments before.
Yep, so this, the um, the signal warrant analysis will be, this will be something. So ours, this site, it does not meet OSTA requirements, so it will not go directly to OSTA. However, it will be reviewed in the encroachment permit process by DOT traffic. Um, and just to kind of, I guess, speak to some of the land uses that were used. Um, in terms of the intent for potential applicants that we're, that I know that the developer was was speaking to, that use of the high turnover sit down restaurant, that was kind of at the discretion. We had coordinated that with DOT directly, and our concern with making any updates to those land uses would be that they would be reviewing it after in the encroachment permit process and may tell us to undo or I guess undo the changes that we've made. So that's kind of why we, that that use of the high turnover sit down restaurant is kind of from that conversation with DOT. Um, but like I said, this this would be reviewed by DOT traffic in that encroachment permit process.
How fast is that process?
Um.
Like, the question behind the question is, let's say it starts to go through the process and, you know, hey, Greg, I'm gonna go again, go back to this grocery, which I just don't fully believe it right now, um, goes in, DOT reviews. Grocery stores op- up and operating, open, nothing's stopping that, right? This this, it's not a condition, it is no, you can get your CO without that, right? I imagine, like, how long, and let's say then DOT determines us, you know, more controls are needed. Then they have to go through their whole process of getting that and putting that in place. In your experience, how long does that normally take?
So uh Commissioner Cantor, Matt Bruton from BL, for the record, I can help answer that question. So uh typically the encroachment permit process, you know, follows the local approval process because the DOT wants to know that uh it's gone through the local channels, they don't want to waste their time on something that obviously hasn't been successfully approved locally. Uh, we typically see, obviously depends on workload, um, but we typically see their first round of comments in the four to six week range once we submit. Um, and then we obviously uh, you know, revise accordingly, and then it's usually another potentially four weeks after that to gain an approval from them for the encroachment permit. Um, to your, I think, part of your question is, we can't do anything on the property until we, you know, we we do anything with DOT, because obviously the driveway is a critical aspect to access the site. If we don't get approval from DOT, then this is all for nothing. So uh, you know, the success of the project not only relies on your guys' approval and support, but also DOT's as well. So they're they're hand in hand, even though you guys are different agencies with different purviews, but um typically it's kind of two to three months overall. Um, and obviously, we need both both sign offs from you guys locally and from from a, from a driveway standpoint. And obviously, we need both both sign offs from you guys locally and from from a driveway standpoint, I would say.
They're not handling, they're not coming in and saying. Oh, put a stop light in here, actually, what we would want you to do here for the most part.
They that that is within their purview and the driveway and the orientation that we have shown on our site plans and and the. The offsite roadway along the frontage that's kind of covered in Mr. Kirk's report and that's depicted on our site plan. That is being evaluated, so yes, you know, light or no light, they would be looking at that option.
Can I, can I ask? I'm sorry, Matt, for clarification. Typically with a project that is reviewed and approved by Oster. That approval must be secured before a building permit can be issued, is that correct? Is the same.
Correct.
Okay, so we do not have an Oster involvement because it doesn't meet the 100,000 square feet of square footage. And it's not over 200 cars, is the same process. Required just with the roadway encroachment permit that you have to get the roadway encroachment permit before you can get a local building permit?
No, so the Oster permit, which is not triggered here, the town's not legally allowed to issue a building permit until that's approved. The encroachment permit is not the same, the town could issue a. A building permit, but again, we couldn't do any work in the roadway and and some of the things that are difficult on our site plans. Without the DOT permit, so those those permits, encroachment and building permit could go concurrently. With the plan that we have in front of you, but there's no. There's no step one versus step two, like in an Oster process where it has to be one than the other, encroachment can go concurrently with the building permit application.
Okay, I'd like to hear from Marissa.
Hi, good evening, Marissa Trolle with AKRF, for the record, the city's peer review consultant. The commission has largely echoed my comments to this point. We spoke earlier today and I believe Mr. Kirk is also going to be looking at some supplemental, but. Effectively, our comments are that we don't necessarily feel we've captured a reasonable worst case. Traffic analysis because that the land uses selected. Our recommendation was to exclude. Land uses that would be higher generators that would still fall under the zoning retail purview. To the comment made earlier about, you know, zoning only has general retail, that's extremely. Common, zoning doesn't always list out every single land use that we have available in IT. The goal that we have for these traffic studies, and I believe I brought it up on the Norden application as well, is to come up with a reasonable worst case. So if it's reasonable that there will not be. McDonald's on a site, we don't say you need to analyze McDonald's just because it meets the zoning. However, if reasonably. A grocer could be on the site, we would ask that the reasonable worst case be evaluated, whether it's. Supplemental to what they think is is what's most likely there, but. The concern would be, and and to be completely fair, the the supermarket. Or the grocer aspect of this, I've I had time because I'm last to kind of look at the trip generation rates. I don't know that that necessarily is going to tip the scales given the size of it. Though I will acknowledge that grocery store is one of the most. Challenging land uses that we deal with because Wegmans versus Stop and Shop versus Trader Joe's versus Stu Leonard's. They they have a very different clientele and operating and IT does not capture that. Exceedingly well, particularly for the Northeast and the thrill people have for certain retailers. So much so that Connecticut DOT actually has a their own major traffic generator and and distinguishing of grocers. So this wouldn't be of that size. Yeah. Like, for instance, we did the Wegmans application together, right? And Wegmans was conduct said, you must use this trip generation. They, I I could not make a comment about the trip generation, whether I thought it was sufficient or not, being the first Wegmans in the city, in the state. And in this city because that was conduct's mandate. So the supermarket could vary on the straight IT. Rates, I don't necessarily think that it will wildly tip the scales and the results. My larger concern actually is the operations of the restaurant facility, the non-drive through. I completely understand the applicants, this is just something we as traffic engineers are stuck with. With this IT and it being the nationally approved methodology. I respect and understand the response that. The high turnover sit down has more surveys, so it has more data points to be a little bit more valid. But all of these uses come with descriptions that IT gives us. That let us know kind of how to pick between different restaurants. And what I'm hung up with that you saw in my response memo is that the high turnover sit down is supposed to be, you are seated by someone. And you will stay an average of 60 minutes. The email that was put in the appendix that was sent to Condot describes Chipotle and. Jersey Mike's, which are not that, it also explicitly notes that takeout is a small. Percentage, if any, of a high turnover sit down, which is not what I think. That Jersey Mike's or Chipotle's is, that is a takeout. At least ha- half of or a portion that is not minimal. Is doing takeout from those sites and they are certainly not staying for 60 minutes. The difference on those trip generation rates are extremely notable. In fairness, the rates that are generated for fast food without drive through, because a lot of fast foods do have drive through. There's only a handful of surveys to support those data points, so they are quite high. What Mr. Kirk and I distressed today is trying to find a middle ground, they've done a lot of private development. Perhaps they have driveway counts of a Chipotle and we can look at something that's between what they've analyzed. And the highest IT, which I said would be amenable to me. Because again, a Chipotle and a Jersey Mike's and a local mom and pop will all generate very different things. But we need to be sure we're looking at reasonable worst case, and if Chipotle is being named to Condot, I don't necessarily feel we've captured Chipotle for this site. So I have a larger concern with fast food. I agree with the methodology used for warrant that's been revised that they presented to you. But it goes back to if there's more trips on the site, then there's a likelihood that they may warrant a traffic signal. For the commission's knowledge and so that I can at least support this conversation. I have recent experience as well on the private side in a different town. Requesting a traffic signal that was very much warranted and met several warrants with Condot. And they still did not want to install that traffic signal. So there is a very real possibility that if everyone here, that has been spoken correctly, if everyone here wants this traffic signal and if it meets warrants. Contact could still not approve it. However, in my mindset, if the applicant puts forth a warrant that says it's needed, they agree to pay for it. They work through the process with Condot and they want to prove it, that's a different story to me than the rest of us feeling like it's. Needed and obviously conduct is 1,000% not going to say, let's put a traffic signal here when we're submitting material to them that says it's not warranted. So I do think the chances of putting a traffic signal here are slim. But I still would like to see what the impacts are of a reasonable traffic volume, reasonable worst case for this site. And let that play out with Condot so that we at least understand where they stand in relation to a traffic signal on this corridor. Because while it is a state route, my experience is on a different state route and they may feel differently about a traffic signal here. Particularly with your TMP's safety concerns and otherwise, so that's. The primary summation of my findings, which is just that I don't. Feel I can fully assess. Or tell you that I feel like I've looked at the reasonable worst case for this site unless they were excluding some of these uses that. I don't think are in the trap trip generation.
Marissa, do you have the ability while we continue. This hearing and go into public comment. To. Provide for with either Steve or Brian. With language that we might insert. Into a resolution. That could address. This concern and that you would feel more comfortable with?
Certainly, and I think the resolution before you does have some. I think the resolutions that have been drafted have some level of that information provided. I think the question to you or the question, Mr. Kirk and I were trying to address right before this meeting, I believe. Or also, Mr. Bratton was. Whether or not the applicant wanted to agree to exclude in the use versus adding them to the traffic study. What I heard and what I heard right before this as well was that they don't want to have that listed as an exclusion. So. I believe the question for you, I guess, is what you're what you would looking for the end result to be, I do think that there is a traffic study follow up in there. I do believe that there is a going to DOT to coordinate the warrant if necessary, I believe those items have been accounted for. It's just a question of if you want to say that uses will require a supplemental traffic study or not. Because if we do six months post and it's not yet occupied. Or it's occupied with something else and then a year later it releases to Trader Joe's. I don't know, I will defer to Steve and Brian, I don't know if your code allows you to have purview back over that or not. If it does, then I think you're protected, if it does not, then I don't think the resolution currently gives you that. If this use is put in in a year, you can revisit traffic. But if I'm misspeaking, please, Brian or or Steve, correct me.
No, I was thinking along the same lines of of of. Some kind of condition of approval that should the tenant switch from retail to like. With a retailer whose principal use is grocery or food related, that it would have to. Come back with additional traffic analysis, so we can we can share that when we get to the later stages.
Marissa, you know what this project reminds me of, and I know comparisons may not be fair, so tell me just to shut up, which is totally fine. Further up the road where you have the Starbucks on the left. The shopping center there, north of, what is that, Chris Mill? And you have people coming out, they can make the left turn without a light, accidents happen very frequently there. Everyone knows that what a mess that is and it feels very, I feel like deja vu a little bit of like, wait, we're going to repeat that. Just a little further south on the other side of the road, like. I don't know, like, is that a fair comparison, like Starbucks? Some chain retail, like.
I will say the traffic volumes get higher further up as we've seen by the ramps. So that particularly is is likely worse than this. But my concern is always the more traffic we generate without a traffic signal. The more opportunities, people get frustrated, like I understand the applicant's point that it's not. Cities backup that's going to happen, it's going to be their own site driveway, but we are going to deal with the. You know, the repercussions of someone deciding that. I'm going to just jet out here because I'm so frustrated waiting, I don't think the synchro analysis is necessarily accurate, our synchro, when it gets to a. Certain threshold will start throwing out really large delays, I think five minutes to get out of this site isn't heard of, someone's going to inch, then they're going to sit somewhere, they're going to do things that they shouldn't do, but. People aren't going to be there for five minutes, but. Yes, I that's why I want to make sure we've gotten the reasonable worst case and we've made the best case for whether a traffic signal would help us for safety. Because unfortunately, there is a large burden with the current MUTCD manual for getting a traffic signal put. In a place and I I will caution that whether this generates slightly less or slightly more or notably more. Condot may still not agree to this traffic signal because that's just been something they've. They've taken that position very recently with me that makes me feel, and and I know that. The consultants, the consultants traffic study has had the same experience to me that Condot is being very. Careful about where they put traffic signals, they have to maintain them, they have to deal with them, but. I agree, we've got sites like this. All over that would be improved with traffic signals, but. Again, also, they they generate more than they think they would in doing their traffic study and then in turn. The time period with which you could request the traffic signal has passed, they would have to then go apply on their own merit and desire to do so.
Chapin?
If Mr. Burton has something relevant to that piece, I'm going to move on a bit from the traffic sale with a different question. I don't know if you want to recognize him to speak instead of me.
Can I just have one more comment about the traffic and and then we can move on? Okay, so we've been talking about cars. You know, it's very car dependent, but now you are putting in residential space, you're putting in apartments. And I I I thought we were moving towards making things more pedestrian and friendly.
Now, we had comments centered around that as well, I will say it's nice to see that the sidewalk is included now. But. We had comments and I believe the applicant also agreed to remove the queuing space. Denoted beyond the crosswalk that's on the site as we didn't think that was very pedestrian friendly either. The last thing that remains for us with the site really not serving that pedestrian friendly. It's a function of what the land uses could actually need, but they've designed the site to need a very large tractor tailor. If needed, because the uses haven't been sorted out. And in turn, there is a very large crossing in front of the site that also can't be signalized because it's not. Meeting the warrant for a traffic signal, so if I was to point out one. Flaw right now with the pedestrian, it's strictly the width of this curb cut, which is very large even for the curb cuts you have on this stretch of roadway. They've done everything they can to stripe it out, we did ask for the possibility of mountable curb. Which means a large truck could drive over it, but every other vehicle would be more discouraged, it's definitely better than striping where. You can stripe out a corner, to me, that just means no one's supposed to be there, so my car can be there. So I don't know that striping discourages vehicles from being in that space. I don't know if the applicant has a position on the mountable curb since our meeting earlier today, because it was just a couple hours ago, but. At least that would would be a nice middle ground between where we are on that curb cut, but that's my last concern regarding the pedestrian of this site.
Thank you, Mr. Bruton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, here, let me lower my hand. So obviously, you know, we hear the concerns as this kind of presentation has has progressed with questions for you and obviously. By discussing with your peer review, Marissa, obviously about the concerns as well. Obviously, I think you guys understand the position we're in as well, where we don't have secured tenants, we're dealing with market conditions that are a little bit different from. Even what they were two years ago, so you know, talking with the applicant, you know, we're amenable to a. A condition of approval that would require the applicant to come back with a. Potentially revised traffic study once tenants are secured. As your peer reviewer has said, and and I think we've admitted to you as well, you know. Whether it's a grocer or a certain restaurant, the the numbers could change not at all or significantly. So, you know, we're willing to, you know, offer that up as, you know, once there's more defined. Tenants, which we don't have at this point, provide that as a conditional approval to 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 provide an updated one that's maybe. More accurate to the occupancy of the site. And then obviously, you know, with that understanding that, again, this is a DOT road. The driveway and and the traffic light and and those offset improvements really come down to them. Unfortunately, sometimes they're on our side, sometimes they're not, sometimes they they. Act in unexpected ways, but I think hopefully that offering that potential commission of approval, if you guys see it fit, will give. The commission some sort of comfort over the ability to make sure that the site is successful and safe. Again, knowing that DOT will will also have another second set of eyes on this as well.
Thank you, Chapin, you have another comment?
Yeah, I need to process what he said a bit more, but and I probably will have some questions on that, but I want to jump back to Mr. Talaro for a moment. We've talked about a a signal as a way to to make this left turn. Like safer, both in and out of the site, are there other approaches we could take if a if a signal is not the the correct mitigation here? You know, likely mitigation, you know, are there other ways we can make this left safer or look at removing it if it's not going to be safe?
Yeah, I actually, I have a very similar situation I'm dealing with, so I'm both sympathetic to the applicants trying to make this work. With and without a traffic signal. And ironically, which also surprised the town I'm working in, that DOT took the position to not limit the left turns out of the site and make it right out only. Because their opinion was people would do it anyway. And it wouldn't be as expected. In that particular situation, it also worked to my benefit, I don't disagree, you can force it. But. I don't disagree that seeing a car make a left when they're not supposed to causes its own set of problems. You know, what we would usually try to do is tighten up the approach as much as possible. Try to create gaps in traffic from adjacent traffic signals. So DOT, for instance, could look at the coordination of the traffic lights, I'll say a lot of DOT's traffic signal coordination plans were done. More than 20 years ago and that could create some gaps to make this safer. You know, two-way left turn lanes got a bad rap years ago at being referred to as suicide lanes. They actually can help to to get out into traffic, cross one lane and have the other. But. You know, the I I would have to look at the adjacent traffic signals if even if they retimed, which would kind of be. You know, the, I, I would have to look at the adjacent traffic signals if even if they retimed, which would kind of be the low hanging fruit. If the traffic signals are close enough, once you get more than, you travel more than a thousand feet from a traffic signal, cars start spreading out. One guy wants to go forty, one guy's going twenty-five. So they're, that, those gaps, they're not platoon and stuck together, kind of. So there are a couple mechanisms, you know, warning, driveway ahead, though everyone here is fairly aware, like, it's not like this is gonna be. A road, people are gonna be surprised that someone's making a left turn out of curb cut because it happens all the time. So I'm not worried about the unexpectedness of the left turn. If the traffic signals were close enough, that to me would be your best bet of decreasing driver frustration is creating gaps by re-timing the lights to. Be more synchronized so we can create a gap between two lights for these cars to make a left.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I, I was having some similar thoughts, like, you know, if it was right turn, only folks would do it anyways. We, we see Connecticut out, for example. Um, I, I was wondering more about that, like dual turn lane, that way it's like. They only have to cross one lane of traffic, you know, going out, they can pause there and then continue on. I see that on Westport Ave, well, that's two lanes, I guess, but. I don't know, like, it, it, there's, if a traffic signal's not likely to be, uh, something that's feasible for this site. I'm just looking to see what we can do to, to make sure that it's safe. Um, yeah.
Understandably, and the one thing I'll caution is it will be very hard minus making the resolution say like if one accident occurs or X accidents occur. Then this has to happen. The burden for a traffic signal for safety unfortunately is very behind the times. We have to have. A notable crash history that already exists before the traffic signal can go in to fix that. And you also, and Condot's taking a very strong stance on this in my recent experience. You have to be able to prove that you've tried other things to mitigate that, even if the traffic signal is the low hanging fruit, you would do this. You have to prove a history of trying to mitigate the safety otherwise before they will approve a traffic signal under a safety warrant. So the volume warrant is actually the easiest. Way with Condot, and I do appreciate how the applicant only used left turns because that is something that Condot is kind of requiring. I just wish. We were trying to have a conversation with them if the volumes were higher and we maybe met some warrants and we were trying to talk to DOT about. Your feelings and the city's feelings about putting the traffic signal there. And whether they said yes or no, I would just feel better that all avenues had been explored.
Sure, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Nick, did you have something else? Your hands.
No, sorry about that.
That's okay. Uh, there's a hand that says Liz Suchi.
Hi, this is, uh, Phil DiGennaro. I dialed in on her Zoom number, so it's my hand. Can I speak?
Uh, are you here for Norden?
No, I'm with this project, Phil DiGennaro with Albert Feinstein, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. I just wanted to say that. First of all, we are not anti-traffic light and we're not anti-safety. If we had tenants that. Were high demand tenants, high traffic tenants, high IT, we would absolutely. Put a light there. It's actually better for the center, it's better for everything. But we don't have them today. And there is a likelihood we don't get them. I could see that twenty thousand feet being, you know, medical retail today. Like you mentioned a few tenants before, but maybe this will help you, maybe this works for you. That if we get. A high-traffic tenant. We will agree to run. Another traffic report at that time. And again. Present that to you guys and more importantly, present it to DOT Osta. As the ultimate, you know, arbiter of whether the light goes there. That, because we're not trying to avoid a light, we just don't have a need today. So we don't know how we. You know. Apply with the worst-case scenario and then something less than the worst-case scenario happens. It'll be, it would be too confusing. Anyway, does that work if we do that, something like that? Agree to, you know, a supplemental traffic report, should we bring?
We'll talk about that when, uh, when we, when we, uh, get to the discussion. Uh, is that it for you, Marissa?
Yes, unless you had any other questions.
Okay, are there any other questions for Marissa? Before.
Quickly. Uh, there was a quick discussion on the mountable curbs. Was there any follow-up on that? Sorry, that, that was something I had thought of, but I'd forgot to bring up before.
I, I'll defer to the applicant if there's any follow-up feelings on it. We brought it up, uh, the, the city and myself on this morning's call and I believe they were gonna. Look at it.
Yeah, uh, yeah, obviously, um, again, Matt Burton for the record, um, yeah, uh, open to that suggestion. We threw striping in there. Mountable, we've used that in, uh, many applications for other projects. Um, happy to, 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 to look at that option. Again, obviously DOT will be the, the end-all, be-all in terms of the condition they want, because it does fall within their right of way for the majority of that, but. I'm definitely not opposed to incorporating that. We obviously want to make sure that we have. Safe access for pedestrians crossing, but also the, the ability for a truck to come in for, for future tenants.
Thank you. Okay, um, Liz, is there anything more?
Nothing further at this point. Look forward to comments from the public and then we can. Chat later.
Okay, good. Uh, then we will open this up, uh, to, uh, the public. Um, Steve or Brian, uh, you want to explain? Um, how people, uh, can access the, uh, meeting?
Sure. So for anyone from the public, if you'd like to speak regarding this application, you could just hit, uh, the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. And if you're dialed in on a phone, you would hit star nine.
Okay, I'm just going to remind anyone who wishes to speak, uh, 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 again, please, uh, give us your name and, uh, your address.
Uh, so first we have Laura Lamorte.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, hi, um, I'm Laura Lamorte. I live at, uh, fifty Aiken Street, which is the Rolling Ridge. Uh, complex that directly abuts, um. The, uh, two seventy-two, two eighty Main Avenue. And I just want to thank everybody for this fascinating discussion about. The, you know, the details of the traffic. It really helps to understand that better and what the limitations are. That is, um, was, uh, uh, has been a, a big concern of many people around here and the fact that, uh, it doesn't seem like. There can be any justification for a signal. Is of some concern, especially if we can't limit the left turn. Um, I, 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 I think that that's a, a disaster waiting to happen, but, um. Uh, I'm glad to hear that there might be some ways to mitigate that or to, uh, review that again. Um, at some point going forward. Uh, just want to mention that I, I'm appreciative of the applicants, um, that they're, the. Plans going forward are, um, more sensible than the ones that were presented as far back as two thousand and twelve. When, uh, BJ's type big box, um, development was proposed. Uh, that would, uh, was a big concern of ours. Uh, so it, we, we're happy to see this site. Uh, being developed, uh. That, that, that's with something that's more in scope with the neighborhood. Unfortunately, some of these traffic issues are. Um, are real, uh, this route, you know, Route seven Main Avenue. Is, is complicated, does come with a lot of traffic at certain. Points on, you know, I'm, I'm totally in agreement with, uh, various commissioners who have raised these concerns. So, that's really my only concern right now. Um, we just, uh, hope that. This, um, more modest approach to the development, um, is one that goes forward and that, um. Um, the safety concerns can be addressed to everybody's satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else in the moment. Oh, go ahead, sorry, Brian.
Oh, sorry. Uh, if anyone else would like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool. Miss Diane Loricella.
Good evening, uh, for the record, uh, my name is Diane Loricella, twenty-one, Little Fox Lane. Um, this site has a special meaning for me because it's what brought me to Norwalk. Oh, so many years ago in the early eighties. Um, I was, uh, the person that found the main pollution source, which was Alanco. Which affected down gradient the city, uh, not the city, the first taxing district, Wellfield off of Broad. Street. So I'm very familiar with the ongoing mitigation plans. Um, I'm here tonight. To be in favor of this more modest plan. Uh, with some, uh, questions that, uh, I think would assist the commissioners in deliberating. Conditions to the permit. Um, first of all, I, uh. Going forward, many years later, I was, uh, hired. By the Rolling Ridge condominium group when I think it was one of. Liz Suchi's mentors, Frank Zulo first brought a large, uh, retail shop. Possibly BJ's wholesale back twenty-twelve or abouts. Um, we successfully were able to. I guess scare the applicant at the time. Um, there was also a, uh, local election, so they, they withdrew their initial application. The reason why I mention this is because, uh, the following I would like to see as conditions to this permit. Um, I do think and I agree with Laura Lamorte, who I did work with for many years, both the, the initial iteration. Of the alleged BJ's wholesale, eighty, as they said, eighty, uh, I think it was eighty-five thousand square feet. And then the, the next phase, which was, uh, kind of the lipstick on the pig where they. Had a potential BJ's wholesale that was fronted by a series of small buildings. I cannot say how happy I am that this commission did enforce the, um. The, the, the permit being, um, the deadline not being met. So I, I think that this applicant and their representatives. Have come forth, uh, with, to you with a reasonable and modest plan. And so, uh, I'm very happy about that. Here are my questions and then I'll be done. I wanted to know if. First of all, who? Is in charge of the continued soil and groundwater? Mitigation and treatment? And have they signed off on this plan with this owner? Um, I do believe the, I, it's my understanding. At least before that the, uh, earlier owners of the site. Are, need to be in charge of and paying for the ongoing groundwater and soil. Uh, cleanup. That has been going, uh, over a decade and a half. So I, that was my first question. Uh, secondly. In light of that. Could there be the possibility of use of more green infrastructure opportunities? Related to, um, similar to what, uh, one could see. In many of the, the, this similar type of land use as well as parking lots where. You don't have curbs around the, um, parking lot islands. You actually have. A direct inflow of, uh, stormwater runoff into rain gardens with proper. Blockage, so the cars will not drive into those. Um, they're not drainage ditches, they're actual, um, vegetative. Um, features. And could that be utilized or would that obviate the, um, current ongoing soil and groundwater treatment? Secondly. Because of the former use of this site. And the ongoing soil and groundwater cleanup. Are any of these buildings going to have a vapor barrier placed underneath them, especially in light of the fact? That you can build. Residential properties on brownfield sites if best management practices and level of cleanup is maintained. So I didn't see in the, um, applicant information, any hydrogeologist. Uh, in order to let you know about this, you, um, because of the site being. Part of a federal superfund site, the only one in Western Connecticut. It's, um. I know that a lot has been achieved as far as cleaning up the groundwater and soil on this property. And between that site and the Wellfield. On, on, there still are concerns, but I believe this site is nearly cleaned up. But again, that would be a hydrogeologist. Uh, giving you their professional opinion. I do, I'd love to hear from the applicant. And their experts, or you can ask the applicant to have a hydrogeologist give you that information, because I do think it's germane. Because you'll have people living on the property and also people working on the property. So a vapor barrier is. Often used underneath buildings that are built on brownfield sites. Third, uh, for the HVAC and utilities, this is something that I had brought up before for Rolling Ridge condos, and that is. It is very good that there will be, um, hidden from the street, different kinds of, um, kind of qualitative. Uh, fences around the rooftop units. But what about the noise? Can there be, uh, as part of a condition of the permit? Insulation or noise baffles so that the condominiums above and also the senior, uh, living spaces. Uh, to the, I think the north, that they won't hear the humming. Uh, and of course, we know that there is not a lot of, um, current, and I professionally speaking, there is not a lot of current. Um, consistent enforcement of the noise ordinance that the city amended recently, but, uh, it is quite. It's not unusual for these units to have a constant hum, especially in, uh, at night. And that would, that would, uh, definitely be heard by the condos above, the Rolling Ridge condos. Um, lastly. The garbage and delivery hours. What I, I would suggest, um, not too early Monday through Friday. I know that there are strictures that this commission has. Um, and make sure that that is in the, um, conditions of the permit, but also the weekend. Uh, there would, no matter what the use of this particular land, uh, there would be, um, trucks delivering. Garbage trucks. And that could, uh, be very, um, difficult to maintain a high quality of life for the residences both uphill. And of course, to the side, either side, the south and the north of the site. So, um. Let's see. Um, I thank, uh, I thank the discussion, a thoughtful discussion of not only Marissa Tarala. The commissioners, but also the applicant and, uh, their willingness to take a look at. And condition the, um, very valid, um. Traffic. Thank you very much for, for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Um, and if anyone else would like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool. We have Heather Dunn.
Hi, guys. Um, I, you know, I'm, I just jumped in a little on the later side, but I just want to say I'm very encouraged.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dunn, uh, can we just add your address, please?
Um, it's one seventeen Perry Avenue. I am the past president of the Norwalk Area Silvermine Homeowners, and I'm now the common council representative for this area. Um, District D that we're in. Um, where the, the, uh, plan encompasses. I, I just wanted to jump on and just say thank you so much, um, to the developer and everybody involved. It seems like all of the issues that we had with the prior iteration for this site. Um, have been really thoughtfully addressed. Um, and I'm really looking forward to seeing a great, great project. It seems like. With it being actually the more appropriate scale, it will be more. Um, usable by the neighborhood and not, uh, you know, as more of a community thing than a countywide. Um, situation where we have a lot more traffic from out of town, which creates more buildup. Um, anyway, I just want to say thank you, um, and I look forward to seeing how this progresses.
Thank you.
And if anyone else would like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool. Joe Ballastrier. Just need to unmute Joe, it should be at the bottom of your screen. Uh, if not, we'll try coming back to you, Joe. If anyone else would like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool. Seeing no, we'll try Joe one more time. Joe, you just need to unmute yourself if you're able to. Should be a microphone icon on your screen at the bottom. You just click that once. Alright, looks like he's having some issues unmuting, um, but nobody else is interested in speaking, Mr. Schuman.
All right.
It appears Mr. Ballastrier did unmute just now. I, I don't know if we can hear you. Sorry, I just saw that disappeared.
You want to try one, one, one more time, Brian?
Sure. There's a second Joe, let's see if.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Apologies, I had Zoom privacy issues. Hi, Joe Ballastrier, 130 Fellow Street. I've lived in Silvermine also and part of my life, so I can appreciate the changes to what has been proposed in the past. One thing I just wanted to say, and I know we talked about, or you talked about how certain restrictions on what can and cannot go there can or cannot be upheld. I am a big fan of local businesses. So I don't know if there's any way that we can say, you know, you could have particular uses, but we're going to stay away from big box retailers or a Starbucks or a Dunkin' Donuts. I, I know Dunkin' Donuts wouldn't be likely there considering where the other Dunkin' Donuts is, but saying, let's put local businesses in there. Let's put somebody who lives in our community there in order to, you know, give that money back to the community versus giving it to somebody in, you know, another state or, you know, a big corporation in another state. So I don't know if anything around that is possible, but it would be great to have a local coffee shop and a local restaurant and other local retail uses. Otherwise, I can appreciate once again that it's a smaller use and it will probably have less traffic than other uses in the past. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
That should do it for public comment, Mr. Schulman.
Okay, then we'll close out this portion of the hearing and we'll turn it back to Attorney Sachi.
Thank you, Mr. Schulman and members of the commission for your attention and time. It's been a long night. There are just a few comments that I'd like to make with regard to what members of the public had shared. One question from Ms. Lorachella dealt with is the, the site is a superfund site and are the entities and agencies responsible for its continued maintenance and evaluation? Are they aware of this application? And yes, they are aware. EPA attorneys, the superfund site attorneys have all been made of the filing. They've been, they've received copies of the documentation. And I can attest to that because my partner Deborah Brancato, who is the environmental and environmental attorney in our firm, has been dealing with them directly. And this application and these, these proposals have been shared by her with EPA and superfund attorneys. I'm glad that Ms. Lamorte at Rolling, Rolling Ridge is happy with the proposal. I think it was something that my client took to heart after the last go around with the prior proposals that this is something that we thought would be more appropriate for the neighborhood, while at the same time allowing them to develop the site in a meaningful fashion. I'll leave the comment about how is noise from the rooftop units, I'll leave that to Mr. Serone. And I think there are a few other comments that would be better answered by Mr. Bruton. Other than that, and as to Mr. Ballastrier's comment, there really isn't a way that you can limit who, who a tenant can be. It would be nice certainly to have local businesses occupy the space, but that's not something that is a proper and sustainable condition or restriction. At this point, Mr. Serone, could you answer the questions with respect to the rooftop units and noise? And then Mr. Bruton, and there may have been a question or two that you can answer. And after that, I just have a few closing remarks and we can wrap things up tonight.
Sure, Liz, a couple of things. The rooftop units are all going to be screened with solid screening around them, and that's going to contain probably almost all, if not all, of the noise that's going to be on them. In addition to that, I mean, we're pretty far away from any of the neighbors. And there's a lot of landscaping around there and the grading is from correct and matter, somebody from BL can correct me, but the grading in the back I think goes up much higher. And so, you know, I don't, I don't foresee that anybody's going to really hear these units any place except for on the roof itself. One of the other things that came up was as far as, you know, the, the site, we also, I know Liz addressed the fact that it's EPA and superfund and all that, but by code, we're required to put vapor barriers down underneath all these buildings anyway, so they're going to be pretty well protected, so I wouldn't be concerned about anything like that.
Mr. Chairman, Matt Bruton from BL, just to, to build on what Phil said and talk about the other aspects of the public's question. So obviously from a, a site standpoint and site noise, you know, the goal obviously was to be sensitive to the neighbors. We, we know about the, the difficulty with the prior approval and the legal path that took. So obviously the, the main buildings are pushed up closer to the main ab, the closest one obviously being the coffee shop. And the closer it is to the property line is in excess of a hundred and fifty feet. And then obviously, for the actual residential buildings, is at least another hundred feet. So we do have quite a big distance. As Phil said, obviously, the, the grade does climb dramatically. I just want to put some other things into the commission's mind. You know, orange is a retaining wall, green is proposed landscaping, and then kind of this, even this plink block here is existing vegetation on site and on their site that also provides a natural buffer. So again, not a huge concern from this one smaller building with this great distance and all these barriers in between. In regards to maybe truck noise or garbage trucks, obviously we need something on the site to be able to maintain it in a in an acceptable, beautiful state for, you know, for zoning, but also for these tenants. The majority of these three buildings are, obviously have their, their loading dumpster areas screened and, and closer to the main ab than towards the rear. But again, I would point out the one that is close is tucked down low behind a retaining wall, which is significantly lower than the residential area to the rear. And then I'll, I think the last question was in regards to maybe green infrastructure, particularly rain gardens. Unfortunately, we know that is usually a request and requirement of a lot of cities. Unfortunately, with the environmental classification and ongoing treatment, that is not allowed on this property. So we have to stick with traditional kind of basins and tension basins and conveyance, some of that green infrastructure that you guys are commonly asking for seeing elsewhere is just not a prudent solution on the site given the history with it. So I think that covers anything that I needed to add to the discussion, but thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think there are any other lingering questions that we needed to answer. So at this point, I would just ask you again to, to apply the standards of site plan review, 118 1451, as I outlined before, to this application. We believe that with some of the conditions that we've suggested and agreed to and some that you've, I'm sure will devise yourselves, that this application will meet or exceed the requirements for site plan review. And we ask that you move forward and approve the application with reasonable conditions that address your concerns and those that we have shared with you this evening. That concludes our presentation and we thank you for your time and attention tonight. And also two other things that I neglected to mention, welcome to Diana Lencowski as a commissioner. And also a thank you to the staff for their time and effort on this application, as well as to the public who took the time to come out and wade through a two hours worth of presentation to then have their voices be heard. So thank you very much again for your time.
And Chair Mitchell, just before you close the hearing, I just wanted to ask Liz, just for, just worst case scenario for if we're looking at conditions for applying to whatever decision that's made. If those conditions kind of start to get a little lengthier, needs some more technical expertise, if she would agree to a potential 22-day extension that would get us to the June 26th meeting, just in case we need to take action at that meeting.
No objection.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll move on to action. We, we have a draft resolution. Why don't we throw that up and see?
Two resolutions, right?
Pardon me, Nick?
There's two resolutions, right? There's a draft of approval and draft of denial.
That's correct.
Okay.
Would you prefer the, the draft of denial come up first?
I let you lead on this, Lou. I think I made my feelings pretty well known at this.
In, in order for us to begin the conversation and not to move this to approval yet, can I have a motion to approve so that we can begin the discussion?
I'll move.
Okay, Darius has moved. Richard, did I see your hand up as a second? Okay, Mr. Rowena has seconded. All right, let's then bring that back up and begin the conversation among ourselves.
I had a question for Steph. I know that in the last day, as seems typical lately, there's been a flurry of memos shared and back and forth. Has, have these two draft resolutions been updated at all from what was sent to us previously based on these recent memos and conversations? Or is this the same that we saw before?
Yeah, so as we were sitting here, kind of going through the discussion, anything that's new is highlighted, so I kind of just tried to, based on what was said by the applicant, what was said based on Marissa's comments, tried to kind of update some conditions as we went along.
Thank you.
By the way, if you have a comment, as long as this is up, raising your hand isn't going to help because I can't see everybody's hand. So if you have something to say, don't hesitate, just speak up.
And then just, I just kind of had Liz, just grant us that extension, just in case any of this traffic signal language kind of gets a little technical that we have some time to massage that language.
Brian, would that mean that it comes back in front of us in our meeting and we, we have a chance to discuss it, discuss it then? Is that right?
Right, yeah. So if, if you decide not to take action tonight because you're not comfortable with some of the conditions, then we have until the 26th to, to get a resolution together that you guys are comfortable with.
Appreciate that. And that would be like through a continuation instead of an approval, right?
Right, so it's, so the hearing is closed, so it's not like a continuation of the hearing, it's just additional time for you to make a decision.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, so I, I will not be here on the 26th?
JJ, let's, let's wait and see if we have to go to the 26th.
Okay.
We might be able, we might be able to resolve things tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So this is, four is really that one that the property owner kind of suggested as well, which was if they do potentially have a grocery store tenant, that they provide an additional study just to provide that clarification.
I just have no faith that that's going to provide the safety for the, for the neighborhood.
I'm sorry, Nick, could you repeat that? I had to.
I just have, I, I understand of the, you know, the new study will come out and we can go back and look at it, but I just worry like, once it's out the door, it's out the door. And we've all seen this left, right nonsense that occurs with these stores and I don't, I don't know, like, I understand it's a site plan approval, so I'm sticking to the the traffic and safety portion of it. That's really all I, we can judge this on, despite other issues I have with the project that's neither here nor there. I just, I have a lot of concerns with the, the traffic and safety aspect of this. Well, I don't know if I can square anything on it, to be quite honest.
Is there, is there any further language that would, would give you additional comfort?
I don't think so, because you know, relying on, on DOT to come back with, we know how that goes. That can be a decade before they decide to do something. I'm being a little hyperbolic for a second, but like, we've seen how this plays out set from time to time. So it's sort of like, this is the moment for that. And I, I don't know, I'm very nervous about that. We've seen this play out a few times now within the city. And I haven't seen it gone well.
So I, I, I want to also echo Nick's concern because I also have that concern. I drive this street every day. And I see, it's not, not only is it a accident waiting to happen, it's a fatality waiting to happen. I see pedestrians trying to cross that road. In fact, just today, I saw someone trying to cross the road and was trapped in the middle on, on the striped lines because no car would, 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 would stop for them. And I know that's a pedestrian, like you're saying, okay, well, that's their fault, but there is nowhere for them to cross on that street. There is no traffic light.
Thanks, JJ.
My concern with item four, if I'm parsing this right, is it's already a very constrained site. And so I worry that if it's built out and change of tenant, the warrants, like a traffic site, a traffic signal, like how much more constrained it will be and like what else will have to be like lost in order to accommodate that intersection at that point in time, whereas like being able to accommodate it at the planning stage, like gives the ability for it to not take away from more of the site. I, I don't know, because it is like such a constrained site that there is such limitations on where things can be placed in the, in the various grades and, and driveways. Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I, that's just what I'm thinking.
So five A and B were modifications based on some TMP comments because they had agreed with the applicant that extending that center median towards the street would be problematic for trucks entering and exiting the site. So they kind of came up with some, some language around that.
Chapin, can I ask you a question based on what you just said?
Sure.
Is, I'm, I'm just thinking though, like what if, what if DOT to Marissa's point, what if DOT regardless of the use, whether it's a grocery store or not a grocery store, does not feel that a light is warranted at that location? I mean, where does that leave the property? That's kind of like I'm wondering what the end game is. Is if it, if the, or maybe also to Nick, if it wasn't a grocery store and just was some kind of retail store, would you have the same concern or is it the grocer? Just kind of thinking without like rendering their property useless by not saying you can't do anything unless you put a light in, when we or they don't have control over putting the light in. That's my picture concern.
I mean, yeah, I think I'm more concerned of building A into, to our pure viewers points on like building A's use and traffic volumes than I do on building C, like so the, the restaurant to the, the left of the driveway versus the nineteen thousand square feet and residential to the right. As far as like impact. Yeah, I, I, I'm less concerned if, like no light is chosen as far as it relates to the condition four. I'm more concerned like if a light is chosen and then like the site's already built out in a way that's not conducive to putting a light in or something like that. And it, it then just becomes a, you know, folks want a light and then it's, it's not possible to put a light in or they have to reconfigure a lot of the driveway in order to make that work. And it, it causes other problems on the site. I don't know, I just recognize that the site is fairly constrained.
Well, Chapin, why don't, why don't we get an answer to that question? Why don't we ask them to, to as necessary, alter the design so that it can accommodate a traffic signal if one is warranted?
Would it be appropriate to ask for a, like drafted site plan that would accommodate a traffic signal? That way they have something we can look at that would showcase that. I don't know.
I, I think the only problem with that approach is that you, I think you almost need to know the answer before they start construction. Because once, the, once the, which I think you're. Steve, you're muted.
You got attacked by wild dogs, it sounded like.
Oh.
Living in the country, it'll do it to you.
Right. Sorry about that.
So what, what about a traffic that's, that's triggered by, by a pedestrian wanting to cross? Where it's not necessarily timed on the cars, but is it dependent upon you pressing the signal to say, I want to cross the road?
But that's only pedestrian focused and the problem is that the site is very car dependent and focused.
But that would, but that would be the middle ground because my concern really is pedestrians.
I, I think frankly, JJ, that condot is less likely to approve that.
That then.
Than, than a traffic signal.
So Steve, you asked, what, what would, what would, what would an ideal thing be, right? So let's just take off the constraints for a second, right? Like one, we know residential has a much lower in-out rate than this sort of retail. That seems like, you know, the condos right there is fairly dense and doesn't have a light. That seems like, you know, the condos right there is fairly dense and doesn't have a light right there and seems to work just fine. Two, I'm not convinced that a grocer or someone like that is not ready and rocking to go. I understand what the applicant is saying. I believe them 80%. But I have trouble reconciling in this environment, the cost of knowing the state of retail and then going to build with this sort of like hope and dream. And I'm really worried that it's 15, the average Trader Joe's is 15,000 square feet. This is 18,000 square feet. That we're going to end up putting something like that in and then Condot may say, no, screw it. We don't think you need to put a light there. But could you imagine down the Trader Joe's in Westport without a light there? That's literally what we're creating or potentially.
But even, that's on a state road, right? And they did eventually put a light. What about the one in Darien? That's on a state road too. It's.
They did eventually put on it, maybe.
And let's. Market, if they have more apartments, you still have the demand.
Let's, let's continue to move forward with with this document.
So seven B was the only change was that was for the sidewalks to get from the right of way sidewalks to along the driveway into the site. They had discussed some grading issues, so maybe just having them provide some sort of alternative to see if we could get pedestrians from the sidewalk into the site in a bit of a safer manner.
Agreed. Thank you.
Nine's a little redundant since they had addressed this in their latest revision to the site plan of the five foot wide sidewalks. But then we just had the street trees, which we understand that there's utility issues that there there could be potentially alternatives for them to to put in some sort of landscaping upfront.
Did we capture the the multiple curve? I think it might be something to put in here as well as a way to like slow folks down coming in and out of the site. So we don't have them.
Sure, it probably makes sense to throw in under here.
Brian and Steve, how wouldn't, when when somebody goes to get their zoning permit, does staff go through all of these conditions to ensure they've been fully met? Is that part of it? Because these approval, the list of conditions seems to be growing exponentially lately. And I just want to get a sense of how 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 well they are held accountable to them or get effectuated.
Yeah, so any, any approval from the commission ultimately gets a zoning permit and typically what I prefer to do is have the staff person that did the review for the commission actually issue the zoning permit. So then they, I mean, other folks can do it too, but it's usually better if the ones most familiar with it handle that piece of it. But they go through and they look at all the conditions to verify it. I just did that with a permit. Michelle did that with the project at the former YMCA site. So she had to go through and make sure everything pre-permit approval was done and accordance with that, any modifications to the plans were completed, so forth.
Feel like I've done, but something about the way you worded that, you said anything that gets approved gets a permit. So is it that they anything that's approved and meets all of these conditions gets a permit?
Yeah, well, no, what I was saying was anything that gets approved by the commission needs a zoning permit. So as part of that review for the zoning permit, they make sure all the criteria, you know, within the regulations are met and all the criteria that were put on as conditions.
Thank you.
What, what if we change the conditions to have the warrant analysis done before any zoning permit? So that they then will have the opportunity to do a redesign before they've gotten into construction.
I think we did like almost three separate iterations of a warrant analysis for conditions. We did one that was based on TMP and AKRS recommendation that one, a new one get done, and that's going to be prior to issuance of a zoning permit. I don't know if I specified that, but I can put that in there.
Okay.
Okay. And then three is that if it doesn't show that it's warranted, that they post a bond just in case that in their six month follow up traffic study, it does show that it's warranted and it gets approved. And then lastly, is if grocery store gets occupies the site.
Can I make a recommendation that four and two almost get combined so that the warrant? I I think they kind of get it. I may not completely satisfy Chapin and Nick's concerns, but if you have the warrant evaluate a grocery store as the tenant that and DOT says no, then DOT says no. If down the road, five years from now, DOT then changes its mind and says you need to put a signal in it, then I'm not sure how we, I don't sure how that's fair to the property owner at that stage to be on the hook for that. But I think at least if the initial warrant analysis looks at a a worst case scenario, which is I think what Marissa had recommended, then at least we've addressed it as far as the commission can address it at this stage.
I think that makes sense.
That makes sense to me as well. I I realize my comments before were actually related to item three here and not item four. I was I was mixing them up. But yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's keep moving.
So that was it for like the really site specific ones. The rest is sort of the.
Boilerplate.
Boilerplate, and I could probably delete this one. This probably is not necessary.
Okay, well, I know there, there are commissioners who are opposed to this. But let me ask for a vote, and I think we should. We should do a roll call on this.
I think we just need Mr. Williams, who made the motion, if he's willing to modify the motion to approve to include those revisions.
Yes, I move that we approve as amended.
Thank you, Darius. All right, let's do a roll call.
All right, let's then start with Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Galen, you're muted. Actually, she's frozen. We may have lost her. Why don't you go through the other commissioners, come back to Galen?
Sure. Ms. Jordan Byron?
Did Zoom just, sorry, did Zoom just like freeze up for people? Was that just me?
No.
Okay, that's just me then. What was the vote so far? I missed after Derek worked.
Darius said yes, that's it.
Yeah, we might have lost JJ as well. Let me check. Oh, there's JJ. JJ, are you there?
There she is.
I lost my sound. Where are we?
Oh, no, good. You, you were just asked if you approve the resolution.
Lou, I can hear, I can see your lips moving, but I can't hear what you're saying at all.
Oh, Brian, you want to see if that works?
How about thumbs up or thumbs down, Lou, for Galen, since she can't?
Now I can't communicate with her.
Galen, you were asked if you're in favor of the resolution as amended. The resolution to approve.
Who, me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. We had gotten to be. I really undecided on this. Can I pass for the moment? Or am I the last person?
No, you're you're only the second person.
We'll go to Ms. Jordan Byron.
Yes, I just want some clarity on what are we voting on? Are we voting on the 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 conditions that a second look would be from the DOT for a traffic signal or or whether or not it's more, it's, it's, I I'm not really sure what what the changes that we're voting on.
JJ, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
It's the resolution that we just rewrote.
So to approve this project.
Right now, but but is it contingent upon a traffic signal being installed?
We can't do that. It's contingent upon them doing additional study depending on who the LEC is.
So it's essentially, JJ, it's asking for a traffic warrant analysis to be done per the conditions that AKRF and TMP had stated in their memo prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. That if any grocery store were to occupy the site, that a traffic signal warrant analysis would be conducted again. And then.
All of that is half of the fact, right? After, after, after the bull has left the gate.
Correct.
Well, no, except for the the first part of the warrant is going to look, ask them to look at the tenancy of a grocer. Now that 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 doesn't guarantee that DOT will require the light, but as I, I think several people pointed out, DOT is the ultimate arbiter on whether a light gets put in there or not, whether we want one or feel it's warranted. It's not our final decision.
But they're going to do a traffic signal, signal warrant analysis on their current plan before there's a zoning.
Yes, and and also within that evaluation, include the other tenants in there that would be higher, higher traffic volume tenants.
Well, it kind of annoys me. There's a memo from somebody that says do the warrant analysis. They write a memo saying we don't think we need to. Somebody else says, no, really, you need to. They say we don't think you need to. We finally get up against the deadline and it has to go into a condition.
Yeah, I feel your pain.
Right. That seems like something they could have just done.
Yeah.
But but to JJ's point, with this condition, there will be an analysis of the traffic signal before anything gets filled. It's just that doing the analysis with a big grocery store would only happen if they're going to actually put in a big grocery store.
No, the the it happens, it's broken out into two conditions. So they would do the analysis with the potential of a grocery store. If that DOT says no, then DOT says no. But the other condition is that if they occupy in the future, they'd have to like, so say, say Rite Aid goes in there for 10 years, but if then after that period of time, a grocer was proposed, they'd have to run that warrant analysis a second time.
And that's so costly and it takes so much time.
Yeah, as, but the problem is we don't have control over whether a light happens there or doesn't happen. That's that's the problem.
That's the problem.
But we do have control over what we approve or not approve to go there.
Let's, let's get back to the voting, please. JJ?
I'm going to stay.
Okay, let's go to Mr. Rowena.
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes, I'd like to thank the applicant for wanting to develop on the site because it's been vacant for as long as I can remember.
Mr. Bryce?
I similarly would like to thank the applicant for the the same reasons. But I would like to see the revised traffic study with the different uses in place. So I'm going to say no and look forward to our next meeting.
Mr. Cantor?
No.
We, Ms. Tabasik?
With the, with the caveat that I frustrated, I I think that there were a lot of very reasonable things that staff asked for in their memo, that TMP repeatedly asked for, that AKRF asked for, and that I wish the applicant would have joined them on a lot of those reasonable things. I'm going to say yes.
We'll go back to Ms. Wells.
I guess I'll abstain, which is a cowardly way out here, but I really toward here.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
All right, that is five yeses, so it is approved.
What, did you get Darius' vote? Because he kind of got knocked offline or?
He was first.
Yeah, he was first. He voted yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, all of you commissioners for this. This wasn't easy for any of us. It is 8:50. What do you say we take a 10 minute break? Come back together at 9:10 for our next public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, see you all in 10 minutes. All right, our next hearing is 2024-14 SPR Norwalk Center LLC, 10 Norton Place, District 3, Block 17, Lot 40, Unit A. Use of plus or minus 113,500 square feet of an existing building and plus or minus 155,000 square feet of the site for a transportation maintenance terminal use. We have already had a presentation by the applicant. We had have already had public comment. This evening will be dedicated to the response by the applicant, followed by our action on this matter. And with that, I'll turn it over to Attorney Sachi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. Again, for the record, Liz Sachi of Carmi, Torrance, Sandak, and Hennessy, and we represent the applicant Norwalk Center LLC. I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. So before we commence our rebuttal, it's it's appropriate to thank you and the staff for the time that you've dedicated to this application, also to the public for its interest in the proposal that we presented. I would like to commence our rebuttal with responses first from Eric Lindquist, because there were some comments relative and questions relative to stormwater management. Eric is a professional engineer with Ty &amp; Bond who evaluated the site and prepared the stormwater management report that was submitted, followed by Laura King, who will address the air quality issues that were raised. And then some comments from Anna Maria Benia of MTA to respond directly to some comments, I think, that the commission and also the public had relative to the operation of the site by MTA. Before they share their rebuttal comments, I again remind you of the standards of review that you must apply to this application as you listen to their comments tonight and evaluate the evidence and testimony that's been presented over the course of the hearings and submitted as part of the application. And those again relate to traffic, parking, landscaping, utilities, lighting, impact on adjacent properties, not the neighborhood in general, zoning violations and environmental concerns, which are limited to in the regulations that are applicable to this application to smoke, particulate matter, dust, noise, glare, fumes, odor, heat, vibration, ionizing radiation, or other pollutant or waste. Following the presentations by Mr. Lindquist, Ms. King, and Ms. Benia, I will proceed with my rebuttal comments and concluding remarks. So, Mr. Lindquist, if you.
If you allow me, Liz, just for one second, to remind the commissioners that throughout this presentation, if you have questions, feel free to ask them.
Fine.
Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. Mr. Lindquist?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Eric Lindquist. I am a senior project manager with Ty &amp; Bond and a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut. Throughout this process, there's been a lot of discussions on a lot of points. There were a few, so I will be pretty brief tonight because there weren't that many related to drainage, but I did want to touch base on a couple of the. So I will be pretty brief tonight because there weren't that many related to drainage, but I did wanna touch base on a couple of the items that were brought up. And just kind of uh reiterate some of the the features on site and some of the uh, some of the comments that were made that weren't necessarily accurate. So. Uh, I just wanted to start off on uh stormwater quality. Uh, there were comments that currently there's no stormwater quality on the site, and I just wanted to correct the record that that is not the case. Um, when the data center went in, there was obviously some underground systems that were put over, uh to put my, I'm sorry, forgot to share my screen. One second, please. So this is the aerial, uh, it it just make sure everyone can see that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so this is the aerial of the site. So I just wanted to, this is the data center over here. So there were underground uh infiltration chambers put in here. Um, that were put in there as part of the the development of the data center site. And each one of these rows of parking um for this area over here, there are underground infiltration systems as well. Uh, this is the area that we've talked about for using for exterior storage as well as parking for the MTA. So this area that the this tenant will be using does have water quality on there. There was a slight change in impervious cover in this area, so we did propose a new subsurface system as well. For water quality as well, and we're providing a um water quality structure, which is a swirl separator that will take out. You know, your floatables, your oils and things of that nature. So in addition to sediment removal and blute removals that land on the surface of the pavement. These these devices will also be so water quality measures will also provide thermal pollution, which was one of the things that was also noted. So I did wanna stress that and say that there are stormwater improvements being done on site. Um, and the drainage has been designed to mitigate peak, any change in peak runoff. Uh, we're really not doing much on here, as you guys have seen. Um, the the changes is just a very, very minor uh change in purview's coverage to this little bit of landscaping over here to provide. Better circulation for vehicles through the back of the building. Um, so I just did wanna stress that and reiterate that. Um, I think there was a comment about screening. Um, this picture probably does the best job of showing um how well this area is screened already. It's screened by the building. Norton Place is way over here and it's, I think, pretty much impossible, especially at uh car level to see all the way over here. Um, the building blocks it as well as this berm of landscaping and uh trees that are over here. Uh, the Norton Ax- the access drive up here for Avalon, we are going to be increasing the screening up on this. That's part of the project proposal. So we beefed up the landscaping here to provide additional screening of this lot. Uh, and then to the Avalon site in general, the the data center and the test building both uh screen this area uh completely. So that this whole area is buffeted by uh the screening. On the south side, um not to go down this road, but a road, but the 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 screening is up as. In the area of this area is already screened. Um, I could probably zoom in there a little bit. Um, you can see there already is, um, actually, I think this is old, so this doesn't reflect the current condition, but. There is screening in this area, existing tree canopy. Uh, there's s- some existing canopy over here, but any clearing that was done was done. On the in the Metro North Rail right away. It wasn't done on our property. Um, so we've maintained everything we can on our property. So. I just wanted to touch base on those key items and uh most specifically about.
Go for it. Or no?
Go right ahead.
So you're not planning on putting any additional screening on that last side?
It's we we are not able to, the pavement goes all the way up to the uh the property line in this area over here. And this is a a an access lane required easement for access to Avalon as a secondary access road. So there is no space on our property to put any screening in that area. Above what's already there.
So I drove through the streets on the other side and and it was not blocked. Just in terms of putting. Putting uh into evidence, my own experience driving on the other side of the tracks and what you can see and not see.
Yeah, there was there was clearing done by DOT uh on the inside the rail right away, and that was where the existing canopy you're seeing right now pretty much was. So they went through there. That wasn't on our property. So this this the the pavement line here is pretty much, you could see it's it's not perfectly represented, but. The pavement actually goes over the property lines on locations. So um and this is an access easement for Avalon, so we can't, you know. That's something we can't impede with anything, so that is what it is. Um, so that's really all I had. There's there was, there's not, there's not much to the site plan. As we've all discussed, it's it's pretty straightforward, um maintaining previous coverage. Um, in most cases, and uh that's pretty straightforward unless there's any other questions, I'll pass it along.
Any other questions for Mr. Lindquist? Okay, um next, uh Laura King, but before she comes on, I also wanted just to remind you that that southerly portion of the property adjacent to the. Um, the Connecticut DOT land upon which the tracks are located. Is currently occupied by the Connecticut DOT in connection with the Walkbridge project, and that will be ongoing for some time. So there's limited availability for. Or opportunity for us to plant anything along that southern property line. At this point, Ms. King, if you could come on?
Yeah, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Uh, I am Laura King. I'm I'm principal at SLR International. Um, I specialize in air quality. Um, I wanna give you a little bit of background before I go into some specific comments and some general comments. Um, with respect to how projects like these and this project in particular has the potential to impact. Um, both the immediate and general air quality of your area. So. Uh professionally, I have a master's in atmospheric chemistry. My research specialty is generally focused on the measurement of short-lived components of particulate matter. Um, specifically those that have outsized health impacts. Um, funded by EPA as part of a clean air research center that characterized air pollution mixtures and their impacts on human health. Um, I've been conducting ambient monitoring for more than twenty years now. I've directed measurement campaigns funded by EPA. HEI, which is the Health Effects Institute, NOAA, um as well as NASA on airborne platforms. Um, that includes training and advisory roles for both state and federal monitoring teams, particularly in near-road applications. And the movement and sighting of ambient monitoring stations to characterize road emissions. Um, professionally, I've also conducted monitoring campaigns to cite industrial facilities. Throughout the United States as well as in Egypt and Canada. Professionally, as a consultant, I've been conducting air dispersion modeling analyses um for industrial clients predominantly since two thousand six. Largely using our regulatory models like Air Mod, and those are for your typical industrial sites. As well as CalPuff, which is a longer range model that also looks at um some of the chemistry involved there. Ski Cam um and some back trajectory models to trace the sources of pollution, like you might see with Wild Virus called High Split. And some of our mobile source models like Moves. I train professionals across industry, private practice, state and federal governments on model selection. Applications, the sensitivity and evaluation of those models and model options, including advising EPA on their proposed updates to some of these existing models. Um, such as Air Mod, which is the regulatory standard for stationary sources. Though, of course, what we're talking about here are our mobile sources or basically our cars. I manage air quality permitting, site selection, compliance and auditing across the US for. Really industries across the board, and that includes evaluation of existing and future potential impacts. Of some of those sources, industrial vehicular traffic um against those state and federal standards. Um, so that's, you know, just sort of the applicable experience I wanted to bring up, so you knew. Where I was coming from and the kinds of questions I was best positioned to answer as a subject matter expert here. Um, so that experience lets me speak as an expert to the potential air quality impacts. You're potentially going to see from Norwalk Center's plans for the properties at ten Norton Place. And um I also wanna be available to help the Commission understand what those potential impacts from the planned activities are likely to result in. Including how we know and with what level of real certainty we know and what kinds of tools that various agencies who are responsible for this. And who knows that they are responsible for this um and are actively responsible for this are using to do that. Um, so that's my understanding of what's in front of the Commission based on all of the materials and the testimony that I've heard so far. At this, our third meeting, and I know um pretty much everybody here has been doing this even longer, so. Uh, so. I'm gonna get into some of the specifics because um a lot of this is technical. Um, there's a reason that I've been doing this for so long. Because there is almost an infinite amount of regulatory and technical knowledge that goes into air quality analyses. Um, but there's, there's two big takeaways that we'll come back to kind of after after the end of this discussion, which is. Um, this project from an air quality perspective really has a very small potential impact. Even on its immediate environment with its worst case scenario. And I wanna emphasize that not to say. And on behalf of the applicant, also not to say that this means. It should be dismissed and nobody's looking at those impacts. But um the reason that the applicant doesn't provide an extensive analysis of that is because the responsibility for these these smaller impacts. Is for regional, state and regional and federal planning commissions. Who were looking at the impacts from growth and the impacts from commuter pollution. And I'll get into some of the the rules and regulations and what that policy process looks like, so that um both the public and the commission. Have a little bit maybe better understanding of of where they can go for some more information on how these projects and future projects are going to have an impact on the community. And what that planning looks like, because it is constant and it is ongoing. Um. So. What you might typically see if this were maybe some of the industrial sites that you would typically see maybe come before your commission. Um, that are that are more traditional, perhaps somebody wants to put in, you know, a new uh. Like, you know, you guys have been mentioning that a data center has gone in there and and data centers often have. Air emission sources like emergency generators or fire pumps, and that's the kind of thing that. Um, the applicant's gonna evaluate against state requirements for how much potential pollution there is. What are the state and federal limitations and required registrations and permits for that sort of thing? And then they would go through that process and and file and receive those permits before they would be allowed to commence any sort of construction activities. Um, so when we look at projects like this, um. You can write that off the board because none of the activities, as we've discussed, at this particular facility have any what we would call stationary sources. Um, so we're really focused on what's what's the contribution from people coming to work at this site and leaving work? And then what's what's the anticipated um in and out traffic volume? And um I'm not a traffic engineer, but I thought it was it was well characterized. And if if this were something we'd evaluate for a permitting process from. Uh, a a traffic perspective, if this were industrial traffic, particularly if we were talking about a lot of large vehicles on unpaid roads, for instance. We would, we would look at that sort of traffic and there would be some opportunities to do some sort of modeling. Um, and and there are some options and and you've heard a little bit about those. And a- as that's one of my specialties, I wanna talk kind of specifically about how complicated and. The significant level of error bars you have around information you get from the various types of models we have to look at traffic. Um, and it's, you know, it's not gonna surprise anybody to know how hard it is to look at the types of emissions that come from. Traffic on residential streets and the sorts of things that interfere with our ability to characterize that and and draw neat little boxes and get. Useful information out of it. Um, of course, the the idea around a model is that it's very protective. It's gonna give you a super conservative result. That is the goal. After all, you want a conservative answer so that you know what the absolute. And for the most part, unrealistic answer might be from that sort of thing. So. A lot of the models that we use in this field to characterize emissions from traffic are intended to model. Traffic that has a consistent flow and a high count, because that's what creates um this imaginary. Line of cars, you can imagine their exhaust forms a line down the interstate, which I know you guys are very familiar with. Um, and I lived a long time in Atlanta and that that line is quite wide and 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 quite consistent on a ro- uh highway that's fifteen lanes across. Um, so when you are characterizing emissions that come off an interstate where. For an hourly average, which is the minimum amount of time that these typical steady state models can show us. Um, you have kind of a consistent amount of pollution you can characterize because we understand the exhaust that comes out of various types of cars. We count the cars, we look at the types of engines, and we can come up with an approximation of how that's going to behave. For this high volume of vehicles. Um, and that's something that is in fact ongoing all the time. Um, within the tri-state area, EPA is doing it. Uh, the Connecticut uh state agencies, New Jersey, New York are also always doing it. Um, everybody, DOT is in fact always doing it. They're they're federally required to assess that sort of thing. And and that's been alluded to in our traffic studies. Um, so for things like for interstates, we do a much better job of characterizing those emissions. In part because they're a lot higher. Hundreds of thousands of vehicles are are traveling a a small area all in the same direction. All at a fairly consistent speed within certain hours. So we've gotten pretty good at characterizing that. Um, smaller roads, when you're looking at little changes are much harder because basically what you're looking at. Best case scenario is making a lot of really conservative assumptions, which is uh what I saw was done in the traffic study. Let's assume that in this hour, everybody, or at least maybe three quarters of all the people are gonna come to work. Um, even if we know they're not all coming every single day because they're heading out to their job sites, um where they've left all their equipment and their work. Um, let's let's assume everybody comes in within this one to two hour period and then everybody leaves later with their equipment. Um, and some of the the slightly larger vehicles are are also gonna leave to do some of that work, and then everybody comes back in later. So we can, we can sort of piecemeal that together, but the the number of vehicles. Um, and the roads that we're looking at are so small and they are interfered with in a positive way. Um, in terms of getting that potential, those potential emissions to deposit out, um which is a good thing. Trees cause our emissions to deposit out. Um, any walls, any structures. Right? Because what we don't have is is a consistent open flow of wind that causes those emissions to have any buoyancy, any any travel. Um, so when we're, when we're looking at these models, we have to make a lot of assumptions if we want the models to give us. Any number regardless to how realistic it is. We make assumptions that the wind is blowing at the exact same speed in the exact same direction. For at least an hour. That's that's as as far down as those can be averaged. We make assumptions about the vehicle types over that entire hour. And the percent of that flow and what their speed is. We make assumptions about how big they are. Um, and we make assumptions about whether or not any, there's what we call natural mitigation. You know, how much, what's our, what's our average rainfall? And again, that's in a year. Um. And whether or not there's any, you know, a a series of other things that you can factor into these types of models, which are largely geared. Either towards looking at a large interstate or looking at an industrial road, which may be paved or not paved, but is. Has been characterized with emission rates that come from the kinds of traffic you see in a surface mine, in a quarry. That's 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 where the motivation for looking at dust that comes off of roads. Um, mobile emissions that come off of roads um for for. Big new development, construction type development. Um, that's, that's how these models were developed. Um, that's where the emission factors are coming from, and they are so conservative that um. Both from a federal and a state perspective, they're typically not used. Except in significant cases where the emissions from the rest of the project are so high as to include them as well. Um, so that's, that's just a handful of the risks that we see with trying to use models to characterize. What are best described perhaps as small roads, and that's something that we're actively working on as the modeling community, you might say. Um, to improve those, because we want to have an idea of. Smaller roads with inconsistent traffic. We wanna get an idea of how can we, how can we better model what the impacts might be of those? And that's something that's that's always in development. Um, we're always, we're we're trying to screen. Um, from very, very technical tools, which are still with large error bars. They're 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 very complicated is the is the reality there. Um, because we're trying to constantly take into account, how do winds actually move over the period of an hour? Because they change direction all the time and and averaging them all in one direction. Um, you know, I I can't remember the last time in a more urban or suburban environment, we expected to see wind always blowing in one direction. Um, in terms of, you know, predicting consistent vehicular traffic in that timing, in terms of predicting. Um, where we're gonna see the the deposition of. You know, some of this, you know, some of the, some of the dust that you might get off the road, you know, especially in situations where you're not having a lot of street sweeping. I know, you know, in in Norwalk, there is street sweeping uh for quite a portion of the year, which doesn't happen in all communities. Uh, but but does happen there. So that's a, you know, that's a an artificial mitigation, as we call it. So. All of these little things make a big change largely to reduce the potential impact, which is a great thing. Of most of the emissions that you're gonna see from your typical amount of town traffic. town traffic. Um, so it's, it's, it's very hard to characterize. Now, that's one of the reasons that for small projects like this with small traffic contributions, we don't, you know, and, and, and when I say we, I mean, the just overall, the, the community that's looking to get information about their contributions from an air quality perspective. The, the municipalities, sometimes they're local jurisdictions, state and federal, are not looking to get information from these smaller projects. Because the information that you can get from the best possible models, um, and even if you could justify the, the best possible monitoring, have so much noise and uncertainty around them that they don't make actionable decisions. Now, it's important at this point to say, well, wait, does, I mean, then who's responsible for figuring out whether or not there's going to be a problem? Well, the, the good thing is that there are several agencies who are responsible for that, particularly in this area. So both, you know, the, some, the two bigger things that we're largely looking at ozone and its, its precursors. Um, which we spend a lot, as we move into the summer, we spend a lot of time thinking about what's contributing to ozone. Let's pay attention to that, especially if you have any health concerns or small children or, you know, elderly adults. Um, you, you pay attention to that. You pay attention to um some of the particulate matter, fine particulate matter that can be generated. They're usually, you know, it's large or particulate matter that you actually see from, from roads, even paved roads. Yeah. What, who is, who is responsible for having an idea of what that contribution is from a project? Well, that gets into a question about what we call to be conformity. And conformity is a way federally, this is largely through the traffic agencies, um, the highway agencies as well. That growth and changes and increases and decreases in traffic patterns are modeled not just on a, a regional perspective, but all the way down, um, especially within the Northeast and New England, modeled down to smaller even than arterial roads. You know, we're not talking about suburban developments, but pretty much anything bigger than, than a, a, a true cul-de-sac is included in, in regional traffic planning in, in assumptions around growth planning, assumptions around what that traffic looks like. Because the state and in conjunction with that regional planning and federal agencies are the ones responsible for maintaining compliance with the National Ambient Air Quality Standards and the ones, you know, we're we've heard consistently and the ones you should be most concerned about from contributions from traffic are generally particulate matter. Um, NOx as a precursor to ozone and of course then ozone. And those agencies are constantly modeling using photochemical models, which are putting in all the inputs from all the sources, not just right here, but regionally, because there's a big regional component. You know, it's, it's transportation from, from places that are upwind of you. It's all of the highways. It's all of the smaller sources. It's, it's inventories and estimates from little things all the way down to folks' lawn mowers, um, because two cycle engines are pretty dirty, right? So all of those things are going into this regional planning that gets extremely granular. So that we can predict and forecast not just, you know, what, what are our monitors going to be reading throughout the summer? What are they going to read tomorrow so that we can let people know we're, we're predicting this? But what are our predictions based on our growth estimates, based on our traffic estimates? What's that going to mean for our air quality uh throughout the state, throughout our neighborhoods? And, and those agencies are using all of these models and all of this data to predict that. So everything that goes into these growth decisions, all of that that goes into the zoning, um, your local, your local governments are providing that information to these agencies. Um, and they are constantly modeling, they are projecting out, um, they're required to submit all of these plans to EPA. Um, and they have to be approved to prove that the agencies um have a plan to keep everybody in compliance with these air quality standards. So specific to the site, we're talking about worst case scenario. And, you know, I am not a traffic expert, but based on the evaluations I've done of, of other sites, looking at these estimates, looking at the worst case assumptions that are made consistently, we are looking at a few hundred trips a day. And to move the needle using the most accurate models that we're talking about here, um, for this immediate area. You're just not going to see immediate results without tens of thousands of trips. That would be the point at which an individual project would even be evaluated. Um, so that's why it's irrelevant to talk about which models are relevant here. What kinds of information are going into them? And what kinds of information can you actually get out of them? Because there is so much potential noise. And so it's easy to misinterpret um some of the information that's now really publicly available for for poke folks to plug in because it, it, it gives you an idea about whether or not there's an increase or a decrease. But it's complicated to know whether or not that's going to make any real changes. Right? So, you know, I've heard a, I've heard a lot of comments about, you know, really significant concerns about the air quality with respect to what's actually going to be happening at the site and what's coming out of the traffic study and a lot of doubt around that. I don't have any doubt that the applicant has represented what they think the worst case types of vehicles and traffic patterns are going to look like out of this site. And the reality is that the emission profiles that come out of these engines, most of which are basically just commuter cars. You know, with a couple of tractor trailers for the largest engines a week. This is realistically not going to result in a measurable change in air quality, even in the immediate area. And it, I, I know why people, people are generally concerned about that kind of thing because it, it is hard sometimes to reconcile that with a personal experience if you're standing, for, for instance, right behind somebody's truck or bus. But there's a reason that our state and federal ambient air quality standards, which are specifically protective of human health, um, are evaluated on the averaging periods that they are. Our particulate matter standards are looked at on a daily average and on an annual average. Because that's what the best science, which was recently reviewed extensively twice in the last few years, in fact, and it is truly up to date. That is what the, the best science tells us is protective of health is those annual averages. And, you know, for, for ozone, we're talking about no less than, than eight hours is, is the biggest concern there. So. When, when you talk about how air quality can relate to environmental justice, those are, those are the, the biggest portions of that as well, you know? There are real environmental justice issues in our communities. Um, and there are burdens, largely in this case, the burdens are regional. I would, I would say the largest one from my review is a burden from an intractable situation, the location near the highway. That's something where regional traffic and commuter traffic, you know, certainly without the benefit of having more public transit and mass transit opportunities, you're only going to see increases there. So the more opportunities that the state can project that there's mass transit, clean mass transit opportunities for the public, the, the better off we're going to see that regional component be. That's going to benefit this immediate community. So. Really overall. You know, I want to, I want to make sure that after all of this, there's a lot of opportunity for folks to ask some specific questions that they might have. It's important to understand that projects like these are being constantly assessed at their worst case growth and, and commuter potential as part of this regional planning to ensure that compliance with air quality standards that are immediate to this neighborhood are being met. Um, and that's something that's being constantly revised, constantly reviewed at multiple levels up through EPA, which has to sign off on it by law. So that you know, and I, I want people to, to understand that they have an opportunity to provide that kind of public comment as well to their state agencies, to EPA on the monitoring plans that are available throughout the state, the state implementation plans that allow for the analysis of all of this. And, and, and you do have that avenue, right? That this isn't something where the agencies just being dismissive about this kind of project. This kind of project really is extremely small and is not moving the needle from an air quality perspective. So. You know. For any specific questions um that, that might have come up, any, any concerns that you've heard that you'd like me to address specifically? Um, I don't necessarily kind of want to go line by line, some of that, you know, we, we could be here for many hours to sort of walk through some of the confusion that you sometimes see about how air quality can immediately impact people um and how the scale works here. But I hope you understand that the scale of this kind of project is such that you should not expect that kind of impact based on everything that the applicant has represented. And I, I don't see a reason to doubt any of that. So. Thanks for your time and I'd love to answer any questions that anybody has.
Are there any questions for Ms. King? Okay, Attorney Sachi, you want to move on?
Thank you, Mr. Shulman. Yes, I'd like Anna Maria Bonilla to come on to, she has answers to some specific questions, I believe, that either the commission or the public asked. And she would be our last presenter and then I'll go through rebuttal testimony. Ms. Bonilla? Well, I don't know why she's not coming on, but in the event that she does, I'll give her a couple of minutes just to answer whatever those questions might have been. Mr. Chairman, would it be okay then if I commenced a formal rebuttal comment?
Certainly.
Thank you. Uh, so thank you all again for your time tonight. And I would like to first start by responding to some comments that the commissioners made. Questions and comments during hearings, I believe. Up, there we go, excuse me.
I'm very sorry. Can you hear me now? There is some feedback. Okay, let me see if I select the computer. How about that?
That's fine.
Okay. So I am at our, uh, one of our headquarters in Poughkeepsie. Sorry about that. I'm at an unfamiliar computer. Alright, so I'd like to introduce myself. My name's Anna Maria Vanilla. I am a registered professional engineer in New York. And I got reciprocity to Connecticut in order to uh fulfill my license requirements for Metro North Railroad. I am the chief engineer for the maintenance of way of division of Metro North. I've been with Metro North for 23 years, predominantly in the uh structures department and always in the maintenance of way. Uh, I'd like to just say generally that Metro North is committed to the communities that we service throughout our territory in New York and Connecticut. We move approximately 750 trains a day. A full train is about 800 people. So we are very much committed to safety and we strive to be a good neighbor. Metro North is looking for a new headquarters uh in Connecticut. The focus for the personnel being headquartered there will be a rail and drainage. Uh, they will swipe in, go to a job site and then come back uh to swipe out. There will be some shop space uh inside uh for our limited stations personnel. And they, that shop space will store the indoor materials. We wouldn't want to store some of these materials uh outside, just um, you know, for weather reasons and theft. Uh, the exterior storage will have very basic materials like rail, steel sections, concrete pipes and rubber pads that we use for access pads. So um, we're very much looking forward to um, you know, starting our maintenance activities in uh, in Connecticut. Or I should say increasing our maintenance activities in Connecticut. And if anyone has any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a specific question about the storage, although I, I'm not sure if it's directed to you or someone else about what the uh square footage of the exterior storage is.
It's approximately three acres. If you were, if you were looking to the map, there it is the two thirds of the eastern parking lot, the lot between the main building and the data center. The upper portion along the accessway would be for Metro North employees. The bottom of it would be for storage of those materials that Ms. Benella just explained.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. I wonder if you could describe um the activities in the building. We've heard the day shift is roughly seven o'clock in the morning until three o'clock in the afternoon. And then there's a night shift and then there's occasionally a weekend shift. Um, I, I just wonder, wh- what do people do there at night? Um, and what do they do there on the weekend?
Yeah, there is only a one manned shift, which will be the Monday to Friday. And uh from seven to three or eight to four, uh, whatever, you know, works out. Uh, that is the man shift. If there's any um work that needs to be done at night because that's when we could get track time or there's an emergency, then those crews will report there uh at that specific time at night. But again, they will swipe in, go to the job site, uh, perform their activities, then come back to the headquarters to swipe out. And that would be the same for weekend work. When we get track time, they will report there, uh, get what materials they need, leave, go to the job site. And then when they're completed with their activities, they come back, swipe out and go home. So they, it's not a 24/7 manned operation at this location.
So just, just so I'm clear, and I think I am, but let me just say it anyway. You're not, thi- this isn't a situation where you would anticipate uh banging and hammering and sawing and running of motors at this uh facility all night long.
Uh, no, not at all, because this is not a, this is not a railroad yard where we would have, you know, the equipment locomotives or uh anything uh like the work equipment idling there at night. This just isn't a uh, a railroad yard. This is just a building where we're going to headquarter personnel so that this way they could come and go. Uh, they need to swipe in, swipe out, have a, a locker room uh by their union agreements. We have to provide them with some space for them to either change clothes or, you know, uh, use the facilities. Uh, that's, that's the um general purpose of this headquarters. The shop space inside might have some plumbing supplies, which we would not want to store outside, some electrical supplies. Uh, HVAC, you know, small engines, small uh hand tools, generators, uh, you know, things that would be used out on a job site. And they would have to be uh, you know, repaired. The uh electrical tools, hydraulic tools, gasoline tools such as like a chainsaw. You know, we're not talking about large equipment.
I understand that. So basically the repair work that would be done would be done during the day shift, not at night?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Then I'd like to address concerns by members of the commission that have been raised and members of the public. To start, Commissioner Langgallis had asked about the types and size of vehicles and the MTA employees. As we've explained and is, is included in the traffic analysis, we anticipate approximately 30 plus or minus struck built vehicles such as large box trucks, vans, pickup trucks, passenger vehicles, buses, trailers, equipment trucks uh and other items that were identified in the traffic. equipment trucks, uh, and other items that were identified in the traffic report. There exist parking spaces on the site that are sufficient for this particular use. And even after the parking areas on the east are used for material storage and MTA employees, there will still be several hundred parking sta- spaces still available for future uses in that, the unoccupied portions of the building. Uh, Commissioner Rowena had asked questions about the Fitch and East Avenue maneuvers and the status of the East Avenue Improvement Project. As Craig Yanis, our traffic engineer, had testified, there is a city-state project planned with a twenty-twenty-six estimated date for lanes on East Avenue. And as he also testified, the project contemplates a design between the city and ConDOT with potential improvements also contemplated perhaps for the I ninety-five interchange on East Avenue. Those are under review, and those should, if, if properly implemented, address concerns and issues on the roadways. Commissioner Tabatschek asked about sidewalks on Strawberry Hill and crossing guards and pedestrian signals. There exists sidewalks of varying widths and materials, running the entire length of Strawberry Hill from Westport Avenue to Winfield Street on the west side of Strawberry Hill. On the east side of Strawberry Hill, there is this sidewalks from Westport Avenue almost all the way to Winfield Street with the exception of a small piece underneath the railroad bridge. There are um, um, and that's the railroad bridge overpass restricts the ability to have a sidewalk on that eastern side of Strawberry Hill Avenue. But otherwise, there is a sidewalk that goes from Winfield all the way to Westport Avenue on both sides of the road. There are mechanical mechanized crosswalks that exist at most of the intersections. There are painted crosswalks at nearly all side streets intersecting with Strawberry Hill. And there are crossing guards at Strawberry Hill at Roxbury, Tierney, Walter, and King Streets. Question was raised about ownership and taxes. Although this is not a zoning question nor a standard review for site plan review, the Norwalk Center LLC will continue to own the property and re- and pay whatever the required real property taxes are due and owing, owing to the city. MTA, the Metropolitan Transportation Exist, uh, Authority will be a tenant. A question was asked about accidents with the fleet of MTA vehicles. The MTA fleets of two hundred and six vehicles, trucks, picks up pickup buses and other similar vehicles drove more than one point nine million miles on Connecticut roads last year, and during that time, there were a total of twenty-four accidents. Uh, some public comments that I'd like to address. Speeding on Norton Place, um, while that maybe that is a concern, we certainly share that concern. That is a Nora Police Department enforcement issue. But we have offered some suggestions for traffic calming, such as the installation of radar speed signs uh, that was suggested in our traffic report and also identified by Craig Yanis, and that could certainly be made a condition of approval. Questions were asked about the types of jobs that are going to be generated by this, this tenancy. Um, a hundred and fifty jobs be created, a hundred are brand new. The salary ranges are from ninety-five thousand to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, that's salary and benefits. And the types of positions are welders, supervisors, foremen, machine operators, carpenters, plumbers, drivers, track workers, mechanics, and others. Uh, the MTA would be more than willing to coordinate a jobs fair with the city's Personnel Department, either at the Norwalk site or City Hall or other locations in Norwalk to hope to generate interest by Norwalk residents and the opportunities that may exist at the site. I think there was a question about e-stops on the train tracks, and I, perhaps I was not clear. This site and the tracks adjacent to it didn't, are not configured for a stop on the tracks. Those types of stops are generally accessed by a spur line or an offline, off, on offline, so the train can pull off the main line and then continue on to another track that has sufficient space to allow for the train to stop and allow for passengers to disembark. And to stop the train on the main line. The MTA would consider employee shuttles from East Norwalk for, from the train station to the site if there's sufficient interest by employees, but that certainly is not something we can mandate our employees to do. And for unionized employees, it, I'm certain that this would be a requirement, this type of requirement would be the subject of collective bargaining. Why was East Avenue not included in the traffic study? First of all, I believe that Craig Yanis has adequately explained what had, why that was not included, but once again, the study area and study intersection scope were determined by, first, industry standards, two, Norwalk's traffic act, impact and access guidelines, and three, discussions with the city's Transportation, Mobility, and Parking Department in January of twenty-twenty-four prior to our submission. TMP, as it's called, requested additional intersections be studied, and we did that. Furthermore, the city's peer review consultant, AKRF, concurred with the study area, roadways, and intersections that we studied. Uh, questions have been asked about an access from I ninety-five directly to the site. This has been the subject of many discussions over time, and it's really just not something that's ever going to come to pass. But however, there would be no direct access from I ninety-five to Norwalk Center LLC because we do not immediately abut ninety-five. There is an intervening property owner, and that is the owner of the Halsted Apartments, whose property directly abuts I ninety-five. So anything that would happen would also have to happen with Halsted's first consent and agreement and whatever other um, obligations would be placed upon them to create that sort of access. Some have claimed there's been an insufficient amount of time to review the documents. I submit to you that the application was submitted on February fourteenth with, along with all the plans and reports, including traffic, environmental, and stormwater. On behalf of the applicant, I actually contacted leadership of the East Norwalk Improvement, so, East Norwalk Neighborhood Association on February twenty-eighth, eight days after submission, to set up a time, beginning of March, to talk about the pro- process and to talk about the application. Response I received was in part as follows. "I'd like to be respectful of everyone's time, especially since your applications have now triggered the ticking statutory time clock. After reviewing with the ENNA board, we do thank you for the offer. However, given the status of these applications and Mr. Kleppen's intention to seek traffic peer review hiring approval this week for the MTA Site Plan Review, we don't think it would be productive to meet unless your client is amenable to resubmission with potentially major modifications based on feedback or even application withdrawal of the SPR, given the history of the prior contentious special permit app. Otherwise, any meeting would simply fulfill the quote, check the box end quote of meeting with stakeholders to tell us what your clients already plan to do versus to ask us for substantive feedback on what they may propose and not just for which colors of paint we'd like to see. There's been more than sufficient time that this application has been pending, and that, I think that's evidenced by the various numbers of individuals who have sent letters and taken the time to appear at hearing. We also did meet with members of the ENNA at the site on May sixth. Some have claimed that our presentation is an effort to run out the clock or filibuster. Our pa- our presentations are no such thing. We do what we do for a very specific reason. The presentations in this rebuttal are necessary and appropriate, number one, to thoroughly and completely explain the proposal to you and to the public, and two, to create an adequate record and sufficient record in the event of an appeal. Uh, the traffic comments by Mr. Monteleone have been addressed by Mr. Yanis, uh, so I'm not going to go in, go through that. Uh, some have claimed that there are no remedies for problems or future violations. This is simply incorrect. I suspect that if you decide to approve this application, you will have as a condition of approval, a six-month follow-up traffic study post certificate of occupancy, which has been a typical and customary condition that you have affixed to applicants, applications in the past. If issues or our iss- if issues are in, are raised, or if our conclusions are incorrect, then mitigation measures would likely be imposed. Um, I'm not going to get into the entirety of the deci- of the air quality analysis by Dr. Desai. And you've heard from Laura King tonight, who is an expert in air quality. But I do want to call to your attention a few things. Dr. Desai is a California licensed civil engineer who focuses on structural engineering and not air quality. Please be aware that there was no sampling or other sorts of methods or other sorts of analysis undertaken by Dr. Desai. She inflated the va- vehicle trip numbers. She claimed that the property was in the East Avenue Village TOD, which is his nod. And even her own position statement indi- concluded that the site is in attainment. I think that's very important for you to carry forward. Previous proposals are rev- are irrelevant. Um, she also claimed that she had limited time to evaluate the proposal, yet she spent over thirty-seven minutes discussing her findings and critiquing the SLR analysis, in addition to submitting her own written testimony. Uh, the MTA said it would consider shuttles for employees using the railroad, but again, no employer can dictate or mandate the method of transportation that an employee must take. Um, and despite her contention, the history of the site has been fully documented. There are several environmental land use restrictions on the land records, and they, those continue to be reviewed and analyzed. She testified that her firm was contacted because the developer would not. That's simply not true. We submitted an, an analysis, environmental issues in February of twenty-twenty-four in a report by Jim Pfeiffer of SLR. And then in the response to her analysis, we did the same, submitting additional testimony. Um, uh, Ms. Britton questioned what happens uh, if there are changes to the plan. As to changes to the plan, expansion would first be subject to staff review for modification of the permit, and then could be forwarded to you as a commission for a determination if the expansion or the change is minor or major. You as a commission would then just, if it minor, if it would be mu- considered minor, you would draft this, direct the staff to modify the permit. But if it's major, you could require a new application and certainly another public hearing. Uh, one of the members of the public, Ms. Kenny on Triangle Street, uh, questioned hours of operation, whether Triangle Street was included in the evaluation and other items. Um, Ms. Vanilla of MTA has now testified that this is not a twenty-four-seven operation. Generally, it will operate from seven to four with a few overnight shifts and a few we- weekend shifts when needed. Um, Mr. Yanis testified that Triangle Street traffic was included, and the, but analyses do not evaluate twenty-four-hour traffics, but morning and afternoon peak. Furthermore, TMP requested additional intersections and midday peak analyses, and those, although that's not standard in the industry, we included those. Many of the, she asked questions about the vehicles on the site. Many of the vehicles have been removed from the site, but there's a process. You just can't simply tow vehicles immediately. If there's a question and there's a problem with determining the owner of a, of an RV and reaching them continues to be a challenge, but we are continuing to work toward that end. Um, we've also hired a tow company to remove vehicles from the site, and they have done um, quite a good job at, at keeping up with that. Due to the city's concerns of trespassing illicit activities in the parking lot, building break-ins and vandalism by teenager, teenagers among just the overall condition of the property, many of you may not know, but we met last site, last fall on the site with members of the police, fire, corporation council, building and zoning departments. And as a result, the parking lots in the rear and the front were completely blocked off. The building was better secured. Indoor video security systems were installed, which actually captured teenagers breaking into the building and committing acts of vandalism. Um, Mr. Leshak, I believe, is his name, um, questioned industrial use as an outdated use of the site. The use that's purport you is a permitted use in the zone, as are others. And this was a use concluded in your two thousand twenty-two rewrite of the regulations, on which neighbors in the area had the opportunity to comment. New regulations moving forward would allow a variety of other uses such as research and development, indoor contractors, facility, office, manufacturing, commercial vehicle storage, various cannabis uses, warehouse, adult-use bus storage termin- bus to- storage terminal, transportation terminal, and other uses. Other uses were also investigated by my client, including using this site as a potential new site for Norwalk High School, and it got to the point where conceptual plans were devised. But that concept was abandoned, was not purs- pursued by the city administration or Senator Duff. Um, Ms. Olson had a variety of questions and comments. One related to notice. Notice is required to be sent to abutting property owners or those directly across the street in accordance with section one eighteen fourteen fifty-one B two A, and that was done. The regulations do not require us to ignore the railroad tracks for the purposes of notice. Connecticut DOT owns the land adjacent to our property, upon which the tracks are located, so it is in abutter, and notice was given. Ms. No- Ms. No- Olson had notice, constructive notice, as she appeared and voiced her objections and asked questions. As Ms. Vanilla testified, no outdoor work is proposed. Work is going to be conducted on the interior. The outside areas will be for employee parking of, of their vehicles, MTA vehicles, and the outdoor storage of materials on approximately three acres of land. We believe this is a low intensity of use. Less than twenty percent of the existing building is going to be used for the MTA use by a hundred and fifty employees from day to day. As to noise, section sixty-eight of the city code controls. Maximum decibel levels exist in the code and are measured at receptor property lines. However, backup sounds from trucks, as required by OSHA, are exempt from the noise ordinance requirements. Relating, related to inland wetlands on the site, the conservation staff reviewed the proposed use and determined that no wetlands permit was required for it. Regarding idling of vehicles, aside from the state statute that prohibits idling beyond a certain amount of time, MTA has its own policy regarding idling and will self-police its staff, and that policy was submitted as part of our moving papers. Uh, there's a question about enforcement for neighbors. Um, that is also incorrect. The site and the ins- the owner are subject to noise, blight ordinances, and failure to abide by any conditions of approval that you may impose upon in this application if you, if you decide to approve it. There are also cease and desist orders, fines, and even the possibility of permit rescission following a hearing. The claim that manufacturing did not exist at this site is baseless. Um, and if Eric could possibly call up a photo that I'd like to share with you. Norton manufactured air-to-ground radar systems on the site and air traffic control systems. This photo is from the Norwalk Historical Society of Norton's floor in the mid nineteen-sixties. It's clear that manufacturing clearly was undertaken at this site. Uh, thank you, Eric. Um, Ms. Wilcox, who I believe is a, a neighbor at Halsted Apartments, questioned about the private road. Well, the road between our Norton Center and I ninety-five is a private road owned by Halsted Apartment, not Norwalk Center. Norwalk Center has an easement to pass and repass over it and an obligation to pay a percentage of maintenance fees when presented with an invoice. To the best of my knowledge and my client's knowledge, they have never been presented with any such maintenance invoice. Complaints about the condition of the access road should therefore be directed to ownership of the apartment, and it is a private matter between private property owners, and certainly not an issue for the zoning commission to consider. She made a suggestion about uh, caution signage throughout the site. We thought that was a good idea, should be implemented. And as we previously men- as I previously mentioned, the police have ticketed almost all of the abandoned vehicles, and many of them have been removed, removed. As Eric indicated, additional landscape is planned along the accessway to Halsted Apartments to further screen the three-and-a-half acre parcel where the employee vehicles and materials will be stored. Um, additional landscaping is also required along Norton Place as part of the subdivision approval. At this time, additional landscaping along the southern property line is not possible on the land occupied by Connecticut DOT because it's being used in connection with the Walk Bridge project. But my client is willing to work with, with staff once that use is concluded, and perhaps there may be some options to in, in, install additional screening at that time, point in time. I, it's clear that the property has been used for industry for more than sixty years, and it's zoned for the proposed use, and is consistent with that zoning. Um, Ms. Jones uh, asked about the SLR conflict, showing compassion for the neighbors and political pressure. The traffic analysis and stormwater analysis were undertaken by tie-in bond, not SLR. There was nothing deceitful about SLR being engaged by the city for discrete projects like the sustainability project and report it released, and then a different division providing expert testimony and analysis on another topic. Planning and zoning is charged with reviewing an application, evaluating expert testimony, evaluating impacts that um, neighbors claim, their testimony and comments, but then must apply the regulations and the standards of review. There's no evidence of any political pressure was ever brought to bear on this application, so that inference is improper and baseless. Several other members in the neighborhood ta- asked about traffic, large vehicles, um, why not turn this property into a park? Those concerns were addressed by Mr. Yanis. The traffic report presented was not nefarious or misguided, as they claimed. Uh, the study areas and the study intersections, again, aligned with city requirements, were discussed with TMP, and were also discussed with AKRF, which agreed and decided that, that those areas and intersections were appropriate. One, um, one member of the public asked about Myrtle Street as a cut-through, and certainly the city could move to make that street and any others no through traffic by action of its traffic authority, and could also address some parking issues that may exist on Strawberry Hill Avenue by posting no parking signs. Uh, Mr. Freitas, Ms. Hunter, asked about, again, safety, noise, air, and overall development. We certainly need to keep the rail viable and functioning. This facility will do this. Um, other concerns that they raised, again, relating to traffic were addressed by Mr. Yanis, and then again by Ms. King tonight. And again, keep in mind that Dr. Desai is not an air quality expert. She's a California licensed professional engineer, whose air area of expertise was structural engineering, and who again testified and wrote that the property and the area is in attainment. Uh, Ms. Cece, who was one of the last speakers, uh, she raised a variety of issues, and so I just want to go through some of them. First, the youth, this use is allowed by site plan, so it's not relevant that she believes it should have been a special permit use. This commission made the decision during its twenty-twenty-two revision to the regulations. That a transportation maintenance facility is a site plan review use. Um, the status of a standalone study for Norden is really not in our control. But we can't sit by and wait for that study if it's ever to be undertaken, to be undertaken. There's a claim of spot zoning that's always raised when there's little else to raise, but this is not spot zoning. Spot zoning relates to applications to reclassify property from one identifiable classification such as business one. To a different one, such as industrial number one. There is no zone change application before you. Or applications to add new or new uses to a particular zone. And this is not the case as well. This is a use, this is an application for site plan review for a use that is I've, that is set forth in the regulation. Um, the proposed use is not ambiguous to us. We all know what transportation means. We all know what maintenance means, and I think we all know what a facility means. So there really isn't a need to have this this use defined in the code. The, again, the proposal was re- was reviewed by the conservation staff, who determined that the posed activity does not. Did not require any application to it. Um, however, there was um. That the applic- that the activity proposed in the upland review area that extends from the the water course and the waterlands. It, the wetlands did not require a permit. Um, the fact that the traffic study was addressed to Craig Benarof is irrelevant. I don't even know why that was brought up. Um, limited remedies available to the community. Um, I call your attention to something that you dealt with just two and a half years ago, and it related to Chick-fil-A. That application was approved. There were traffic analyses done, that the structure was constructed, and that business started to open. Traffic issues were brought to your attention in connection with the lines that came out of the site, backed up onto Rampart Road and onto Connecticut Avenue. And the client was made, was required to make revisions to the site plan to address those traffic concerns. So the fact that that exists and that is that's that type of analysis and that type of review has already been undertaken at a different site. Lends credence to the fact that there are avenues available, should neighbors or the city have issues with projects once they've been constructed. Um, as I said before, the city has many tools in its tool chest, such as issuance of violations, cease and desist order, levying of fines. And commens- commencing actions in Superior Court. Also, section one eighteen fourteen fifty-one B eleven. Empowers this commission with the authority to review the extent or change of a use that was subject to site plan review. When that modification quote substantially changes the character intensity of the use. Um. The suggestion that uh TMP raised, that my client either design, construct and or contribute. To the improvements at Fitch Street and Strawberry Hill Avenue would be an improper condition if it's imposed. The court in the case called Byth Haveruva versus Zoning Board of Appeals, one seventy-seven Connecticut, a nineteen seventy-nine case. Held that quote, the designation of a particular use of property as a permitted use. Establishes a concu- conclusive presumption that such use does not adversely affect the district. And precludes further inquiry into its effect on traffic, municipal services, property values, or the general harmony of the district. If the city wants to improve that intersection with a traffic light, stop signal or rotary, that's fine by the applicant. But it would not be legal to impose its design, construction or financial contribution. We submitted a memo on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four on this topic, which you've all had the hope have had the opportunity to read. We believe there's much benefit of this app- this application and this applicant to Norwok. It activates a part of the site in the building which has been empty for several years. And all the manufacturing and fabrication will be conducted indoors. Hundred and fifty jobs, a hundred of which are brand new with salary ranges from ninety-five to a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Follow-up studies are typically and regularly imposed as conditions of approval. And often, without those follow-up studies and other conditions of approval being met. Release of posted bonds are are held up and would not be, would not happen until those conditions are satisfied. Acoustical studies, um, all manufacturing again will occur inside. Materials and parking will be outside. If the commission believed that acoustical studies are important for businesses with a hundred and fifty employees. With office, manufacturing and storage components, it could revise the regulations to require such a study. Just as it requires traffic, stormwater management and other stories, other studies. Um. We think that don't box the block the box idea is a great traffic calming uh suggestion for Strawberry Hill. And think that perhaps the East Norwok Neighborhood Association's opposition to it, while well-intended, is nevertheless misguided. Again, tax implications are not within the purview of this consi- commission and would be improper for you to consider. Only the seven standards set forth in the regulations control.